Good morning, everybody. Welcome to this oddly-placed meeting of Gainesville City Commission for Thursday, January 19th. I appreciate everyone being here and your early attention today. We have a good agenda, potentially a good agenda ahead of us. And I want to remind everyone that there are several opportunities for public comment. We all know the rules around that. And as we get to it, I will be specific to remind folks about the light system and how all of that works so that we can have a good orderly meeting and get a lot of good work done for us today. Madam Clark?
My first item is invocation by Reverend Milford Griner.
Welcome Reverend Griner. Good to see you.
Thank you. That's the last time I felt the need to come back here officially and do this, so it was no problem, my pleasure. We could bow our heads if this indication is just shared. Holy one, known by many names and beyond all names, we ask today your divine blessings on the people who have been called to lead the community in which we live and work and fellowship with each other. Help these new commission as leaders to not always ask first, "How can we fix this?", but what do we need to learn and to make things better for us all? Help these leaders to not always ask first, "How might we need to change?", and to whom do we need to listen with respect? Remind them and us, especially in this age of un-civil behavior, words and attitudes that passes for political debate, they are not only leaders but also servants, and that it is their responsibility and ours to serve the common good of all, and that we all may be witnesses to bright and glorious futures. Remind them and us that everyone, gay, straight, transgender, black or white, Hispanic or Asian, Muslim, Jew, Hindu, or even atheist, is our neighbor, our friend, our coworker, and our fellow citizens in this diverse city of Gainesville, and that over the years, the leaders and us have also been called to respect and protect those amongst the children, the elderly, the poor and the hungry, the homeless, and those who are ill in mind as well as in physical body, and those who are alone or have been forgotten and cast aside for no good purpose. And finally, grant these leaders and us the wisdom and the courage to know what is right and good and true, and may they be guided by the spirit of community, by the spirit of justice, the spirit of cooperation, and by the spirit of love. This we only pray in the name of all that we hold sacred and holy and dear to all of our hearts, and that we hold good and right and true. May it be said and done here and beyond this day. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Griner. Good to see you. So I would, I was willing to address earlier, I'd point out that we are down here because we have an equipment failure up in the auditorium, and I wanted to put that on record. We are, I believe, moving Monday's meeting to the county commission just to give us time to make sure that the equipment failure is fixed, and that's why we're down here today. Think of it as historic, rather than a new beginning. Madam Clark?
Hey, our next item is the adoption of the agenda with three updates. Item 2023-5, Mayor RB L. Ward Jr., committee assignments update tech. Onto the regular agenda, item 2022-758, Commissioner Ed Wood, discussion of commission salaries added backup. File 2023-07, ordinance revising civil citation penalties and code enforcement fines and liens, added item.
Thank you, Madam Clark. Do we have a motion to adopt these agendas?
Certainly.
All right. Is there anyone who wants to speak to the consent agenda, two items only on the consent agenda? Once, twice? All right, all in favor? I oppose. We have agendas that pass as you announce. Thank you. All right, Madam Clark?
Our first item is early public comment.
Okay, early public comment is an opportunity to speak on the items that are on the regular agenda later in the program. If you choose to speak now, you don't, you're giving up the opportunity to speak when the item comes up, but we are here to hear from you on any of those items. Anyone want to speak for early public comment? All right, Madam Clark?
Our next item is 2023-64, Gainesville Community Reinvestment Area Project and Budget Update.
Madam Manager?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, Phil Mann is going to come up. He is the lead or acting GCRRA director, and he will provide information that will hopefully lead to further discussion and hopefully adoption of a spending plan for the GCRRA.
Welcome, Mr. Mann.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, Phil Mann, special advisor and interim GCRRA director. It's a pleasure to be before you today and talk about the 10-year GCRRA roadmap for the benefit of the commission. In 2000, on October 1st, 2019, the city and the county entered into an inter-local agreement for a 10-year community redevelopment agency. It basically eliminated the four areas at that time and created one large redevelopment agency area, and that went into effect. The budget is $7.5 million a year, and it was, basically it was capped at FY '18 dollars. The GCRRA has continued to work as a city department since then, and with that, I think there's a lot of confusion among people about how much money's available, where it's allocated, is it allocated? So there's a budget amendment coming forward on March 2nd that modifies some of the GCRRA budget. It'll be part of the regular city commission budget, quarterly budget amendment process. And I'm going to go over why that amendment is necessary as far as the GCRRA goes, but I just wanted to give you a little background that that's why we're where we're at. We have a 10-year spending plan. We're going to be asking today if the commission confirmed that 10-year spending plan, and then each ensuing budget that is adopted will follow from that spending plan. I think it's, I think it's, I think it's a good plan. When we went this route, I know public involvement is a huge thing for the city commission, and when we did this, when we did this, there was over six months of outreach, including 31 different meetings to develop the 10-year strategic plan for the GCRRA. It included 31 meetings, including public workshops, advisory boards, city commission and neighborhood meetings. We're basically following that plan. There's a few modifications to it that I will go over as we get to those particular slides, but I just wanted to kind of give you a overview of why we're here and why we're making this presentation today. During my tenure in the city manager's office, I heard about how much money the GCRRA had, you know, is there money available? Can we do this? The money's only available if we change spending priorities. So I think it's important that everybody understands that there isn't just money sitting in a bank somewhere that we can go, "Okay, we need $3 million for this project. We can go to the GCRRA and get it." So.
Oh, no, we need 20, probably eight.
And the roadmap has three, three basic areas: economic development initiatives, community enhancement, and housing initiatives, and public spaces and streetscape initiatives. One of the, one of the issues you've already seen the city manager bring forward is the combination of the housing from different places into one combined housing program under Housing Strategist Corey Harris. And I mean, I think we've seen how that's working well, where it's a one-stop shop for housing, so kind of where we're headed. So I'm going to go over the economic initiative, development initiatives. The first is the big development initiatives, and the first one is the Eastside Health and Economic Development Initiative, also known as the Cornerstone Campus. We're investing, the GCRRA is going to invest $14.3 million into the EHEDE over the remainder of the life of the GCRRA. That investment of $14.3 million is going to yield over a $30 million investment total on that campus, and that's because the $14.3 million that the GCRRA is going to invest is going to be in the roadway network to put in the basic infrastructure for it to develop, for the food hub, for upgrades to the GTEC campus so that we can expand programs there and make it more marketable, for the cornerstone campus in general. I talked about the food hub and possibly some training. There's other things that are going in there. Between the city and the county, we're projecting a $5 million investment in ARPA funds for the construction of the clinic. That's not GCRRA funds, that's ARPA funds, but the city and county commission have contributed. We have $4.1 million from the Federal Transit Authority that's going to construct the RTS Transfer Center there. So, you know, the idea behind a GCRRA is to stimulate development, and we're already seeing that that $14.3 million we're going to invest there is going to yield. And then the larger plan is that it will also bring in private development dollars. If we can get the development going there, then it'll bring in development dollars. The other couple of major projects that are moving forward that are within the economic development category are the Aitken-Waldo project, and that's budgeted at 13.5, $13.5 million. And as you all know, that project is being funded through GCRRA, it's being administered to the recreation parks, and Skinsolus is leading that project. But we have funding in there for the GCRRA to implement the economic development portions of that project as we move forward. And again, I think it's going to be, hopefully, a second transformative development that we're doing in East Gainesville. One of the things that we're doing is we're, we're moving monies, a little bit of what's we're asking today is to move some of the monies around. We have projects budgeted that aren't going to occur until future years, so we have money that's sitting that we don't need. But we don't, you know, we don't get the full 70 million today. We get it in increments each year from the city and the county. So that's kind of why we're making this presentation today, is so that we can get the money where it needs to be, like, like our immediate need is roughly $2.4 million to build the road on the Eastside Health and Economic Development Project. The last thing on the, on the, on the economic development initiatives is the downtown strategic plan. The CRA has funded portions of the master plan, and we'll be looking to fund portions of the implementation of the master plan, and that's moving forward. The commission adopted the master plan recently and has given the managers some direction to move forward on some of those things that are being worked on as we speak. The active GCRRA projects that are ongoing right now total $8.1 million, and those include the Hartwood Neighborhood, Historic Heritage Trail, I almost say Heritage Historic Trail, commercial facade grants, community partnership grants, district-wide landscape maintenance, property acquisitions and options. Part of that included the acquisition of the White Battery and Electric Company, which is making the EHEDE project a more inclusive project. And then because of the direction we've received from the commission, we're going to unfund the CRA portion of all Fire Station 1, and that's out on the streets either now or soon will be as an RFP from the private sector. And then the one major project that's complete, so it doesn't show up on here, is the Innovation District. We've, the city has made their investment, and we can already see results of some of the private sector investment going on there. GCRRA Housing and Community Development Initiatives, we've got the model block and affordable housing strategies. That's moving forward. That's part of the program that was moved over into the housing program. Two of GCRRA staff is assigned to the housing department, so they're administering the GCRRA portions of the program. But as I stated earlier, it was an initiative by the city manager to make housing all-inclusive in one program. The residential improvement program, it's roughly $4.9 million. You can see the programs listed there. I don't need to go through them all, but there's a lot of great projects that are going on there. I think one of the ones that, from what I've seen, that's really, really allowed us to get some traction is the Heir's Property Assistance Program. For those of you that aren't familiar with the Heir's Property Assistance Program, we have several properties in East Gainesville that were, as people passed, they were never deeded, so all of the heirs owned them instead of one single individual entity. And by not having a clear title, it prevents them from applying for other grants, including housing grants that would allow them to upgrade their homes. So the Heir's Property Assistance Program allows them to, we provide the assistance of attorney, and it helps them get the clear title so that they can then apply for some of the other grants to approve and keep their houses up. And it also clears that title for future generations. Public space and streetscape, $1 million. There's several projects going on with that, the 13th Street corridor improvements. The commission may remember that we entered into an inter-local agreement with the DOT to maintain the CRA, to maintain the medians on Northwest, particularly Southwest 13th Street, adjacent to the university. Same thing with Southeast Hawthorne Road. We're working with the Department of Transport, yeah, the Department of Transportation, the internal Department of Transportation on Southwest Second Avenue and Fourth Avenue corridor improvements. And we're also working with the university, with our DOT, the university, and the Florida Department of Transportation on the University Avenue corridor improvements, which is the larger study that's going on. And then in the partnership opportunities, we've allocated, the GCRRA has allocated $650,000 from the existing TIF. That's not GCRRA dollars, but that's the TIF from the pre-2019 GCRRA for some major improvements to the Porters Neighborhood, as well as allocating an additional $150,000 out of the GCRRA fund for that. The approximate funds expended to date is $13.8 million, and you can see the list of projects that have either been completed or in the process of being completed. And this also includes, like the annual expenses of the GCRRA, like maintaining their offices at the GTEC building, paying staff salary, debt payments, all of the other items that are included in the GCRRA. Where's the remaining available TIF? One of the things that we have to distinguish is the monies generated prior to October 1st, 2019 have to be separately distinguished from the monies that were generated after October 1st of 2019. Those monies prior to October 1st must be spent in the four CRA districts that existed at that time. They have to be expended in the same amount that they were collected. So you can see that College Park, University Heights has roughly $3.9 million. Downtown has $1.1 million. And one of the things that was a discussion point at the commission is the power district. You can see there's currently, there's $450,000 allocated for work in the power district. The Eastside pre-October 1st of 2019 has $4,600, $858. I think we won't have a problem spending that on the Eastside when we bundle it with all the other projects we've got going on. And then finally, it's the Fifth Avenue, Pleasant Street, there's $201,000, and that money is being allocated to the, I can't, I keep saying it wrong.
Historic Heritage Trail.
Heritage Historic Trail. So I don't know why I have trouble with those two Hs.
The Trail.
But, yeah, the Trail. I want to call it the Trail. So that's the remaining TIF that's separate from the GCRRA dollars that the commission, the two commissions have allocated from 2019 to 2029.
Phil, you want to speak to the county funds and the fact that there was, there's right now about $800,000 in a separate fund on the county side for their?
Yes, yes ma'am.
I want to make sure that they have that information.
So when the split was made in 2019, one of the desires of the county commission was to reduce their contribution to the GCRRA. They wanted to have some of their own funds to spend on the Eastside for projects they designated. And right now, in coordinating with their staff, right now they have approximately $800,000 in an account that they can spend on the Eastside. And one of the, I think one of the issues that resulted in us being where we're at was the College Park, University Heights area was, you know, quote-unquote, "a slum and blighted area," but yet economic development was happening there without incentive. So we wanted to incentivize East Gainesville and places like Fifth Avenue and Porters. So the county, that's when they decided that they would reduce their contribution on an annual basis, and our staff's understanding is they have roughly $800,000 that they can spend on the Eastside. And that, just like our money comes in each year, they set aside more money each ensuing year, too. They reduce their contribution to us by $100,000 a year. And I believe that addresses the managers.
I just wanted to make sure that information.
Yeah, that should have been in my presentation. One of the things that we've heard broadly from both of the commissions is that for the remaining six years, they want, they want the GCRRA to focus on transformational projects in those last remaining six years. So I've talked a little about it, but just to put the focus on it, it's on this slide. The slide covers the major projects that the GCRRA is working on. I went into detail on a couple of them. We've gone on the economic development side. We've got EHEDE, we've got Aitken-Waldo, and we've got downtown strategic plan. We've got, I didn't mention it during the presentation really, but we've got Hartwood Neighborhood, which is a huge feather in the city's cap and GCRRA's cap. We've got the Historic Heritage Trail, got it right finally. We've got the public spaces and streetscape initiatives, and this is part of where we've refocused how GCRRA works. They're working with the internal experts. They're working in partnership with the Department of Mobility and the Department of Public Works. They're working with the housing and community development. There's all those model block and affordable housing strategies and residential improvement programs that are all now being conducted under one department. And then there's the ongoing programs, the commercial facade grants, community partnerships, district-wide landscape maintenance. Then, of course, they've completed the Innovation District. And to give you a little overview of the city, this, Alachua County contributes 16 million, says they've contributed 16 million today. The city's contributed 13 million today for a total of $29 million. The county is yet to fund $21 million. The city's yet to fund $19 million.
Because those are future year out.
Those are future year out, so, you know, under the statute, we can only budget the current fiscal year we're in. So we, we're asking that the commission adopt the spending plan that we presented today in its modification from what they adopted in 2019, so that we can move forward with really the transformative projects at Aitken-Waldo and at, and at EHEDE, but it also provides a little additional funding for the Heritage Historic Trail. And the manager passed out, the manager passed out this sheet to give you a little summary of where, where the funding is. So to date, from the city and the county, the GCRRA has received $29.5 million. They've expended $13.8. Under the current budget, $15.6 is in the current approved budget with the rollover funds, and there's $41.2 million to be received, which are detailed out in the spending plan that we're asking you to adopt today, for the total that everybody keeps talking about, the $70.7 million. We keep getting asked, "Where's the $70.7 million?" So we wanted to try to give you a little background. And for those of you that, I think almost all of you have been to the city manager's office and saw the board that lays out in great detail what we just tried to lay out in a presentation. And with that, I will conclude my presentation. I think I conclude my presentation. Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Mann. So before we go to comments, I've got Mr. Justin, Mr. Sacco. Let's ask questions, Mr. Mann, and have some comments, but then before we make a motion, let's try to hear from, from the public before we move forward into action with this, if that works for you all. Mr. Justin?
Thank you. So the GTEC management, is that running a million dollars a year? I'm trying to understand.
Miss Modil.
Mo, you want to address that specific question? Can we let Miss Modil address the specific question?
And also, if you could spell out for me and for the public what EHEDE is?
Yes.
And what TIF is? And when you use those terms, if you would put in parentheses, what it is, the name.
I apologize for that. That comes from my engineering background.
That's okay.
We use acronyms. EHEDE is the Eastside Health and Economic Development Initiative. I thought you wanted me to detail out the sub-projects underneath EHEDE.
Yeah, I just wanted to know what it stood for.
The TIF is the tax increment funds that were collected in those four districts.
Okay, thank you.
And the Eastside Health and Economic Development Initiative is simply a catchphrase or a, you know, term that we came up with probably a month ago. It would probably be called the Cornerstone Campus Initiative. That's how it was initiated in the plan 10 years ago.
Thank you.
So if I may add on to that, essentially what we're talking about is from cornerstone at the east end of the, of the campus, on the south side of Hawthorne Road, going back toward the east, toward the west, for three or four blocks there, that we're talking about where the Closed Health Center will go, where the RTS hub will go, and the other things that are in this plan. So that is all a two or three-block segment on the south side of Hawthorne Road at, what about the 2,000 block or so?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mann.
Just so people conceptualize where we're talking about. And then it goes all the way back to Eighth Avenue, Southeast Eighth Avenue. So it's a good-sized piece of land that we're talking about working with. Sorry to derail that, but.
Oh, it ends up, to the mayor's point, it ends up the southwest corner of the EHEDE property is basically the northeast corner of the Hartwood subdivision, so they're, they're pretty close in nature. So the residents of Hartwood will have easy pedestrian access to the mobility hub, to the transfer station. Mo, you want to address the question about?
The million dollars.
So, Mo Dill, GCRRA staff, to answer your question, the commission approved that the GTEC building have an interior and exterior refresh. The EDA grant was released of the 20 years, and so we brought to commission bringing forward sort of a small. forward sort of a small but diverse incubator. So that was approved, so those funds will be used to refresh the incubator, have programming around the incubator, and then also the interior and exterior of the building.
Okay, now, have we changed the signage on that building?
Yes, we have, and I have that in the presentation for the joint city-county to see.
Very good. All right, my next question then is, so the 13 million on the Eighth Avenue and Waldo Road, that's going to be, that's going to include Citizens Field?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, all right, that's, that's fine.
Minus any potential...
Wild spaces. Wild spaces, fine.
And Commissioner Chestnut, before you finish your point, to remind the commission, for those that weren't here, you may remember that we expanded the GCR boundary...
Correct.
...to include the city property west of 15th Street, west of northeast 15th Street, so that we, that includes not just Citizen Field, but the entire Martin Luther King Center property.
All right, now, on the, included in this, is there the upgrading, the redoing, the, whatever you want to call it, the 15th Street, southeast 15th Street?
Southeast, Mr. Mayor, southeast 15th Street is a county road.
County, county, county.
Alachua County owns the...
Well, we'll bring that up next week.
Good question.
All right, I think, I think that that is... Thank you, thank you.
Commissioner Sacco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Not a manager or Mr. Man either, or, so, under the active GCR projects under Hartwood, I see the increase for Hartwood, or the new proposed budget, so I don't know if it's an increase, I think, I'm viewing it as an increase of almost a million dollars. Is that what was previously the, a separate item for the agenda of new expenses and construction that we'll have to increase the budget?
Go ahead, Mo. The commission approved with Hartwood that we have a new opportunity to bring, to build the homes itself, and so that is taking in effect the commission-approved decision to build two homes at a time, which will then return the funds to allow us to go back out and build two more.
To build them, get paid.
Correct.
Okay.
But to Commissioner Sacco's question, yes, that this presentation relates to that. We have to do the budget amendment before we can bring that item forward.
Okay. Just wanted to don't forget that it was that number, because I know we had prior discussion, but it was gonna, the amendment had to happen before we could do, yeah, workable. Thank you.
Commissioner Eastman.
I see also 1.9 million for the Historic Heritage Trail. I recall that from Pleasant Street, I walked and gone through there, but what is the, it's a fairly large number, and I know it's something you were pushing for, Desmond. Can you go into more detail as to what that is and what that entails?
Yes, just so all the commission know, I believe we are bringing an entire trails presentation here early in fiscal year 23, so the GCR will be able to give more details around that. But with Heritage Trail, the beginning of the trail is the Aitken-Jones that was created. We also work with Wild Spaces Public Places to improve the, the grounds of it. And then, at this time, what's left in the trail, this is what we project, we will need to finish out the trail. So beginnings of the trail, also, you'll see the streetscape on Fifth Avenue. All of that is a part of it, so we're at the final stages of the trail that we'll be bringing forward. We are going out for a request for proposal regarding the history and the historian of that.
Commissioner Eastman, please.
I might have another question. No, 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 move on, ma'am. Thank you.
Commissioner Water.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Mo, for that information. Thank you, Commissioner Eastman, for asking about that. I think, Mo and the manager probably knew that I would ask some questions with regards to this project. It is near and dear to me and a lot of people in the community, it's a project we've been working on for a long time. I did want to get a bit of clarity, because I heard that you're saying some of that, $1 million will be spent towards bringing on someone to do what?
The direction is, at this time, we're looking at getting a historian to take the points of interest, so we'll be going out for a request for proposal, and the funds will be used towards that.
Okay. So one of my concerns from the very beginning, and I just want to be really, really clear, I think that GCR is, you do wonderful work, but one of my concerns even well before I came to the commission was the capacity to do that work. It's very specific, and I think one of the reasons that it has taken us so long is because we did not have an expert actually doing that work. Please take that for what it's worth, and, Mo, you know that we've had extensive and numerous conversations about that. So I'm curious as to where we are about that. I know that in a recent conversation, I would say within the last two months, I was invited into a conversation with GCR and Parks, Rec and Cultural Affairs, where I was very candid about what I felt was a need for us to bring on an expert who actually does historic heritage trails. So is there, has there been any movement on that, any conversation on that? Have we done the research? Where are we?
Yes, this is a presentation that we'll be bringing forward. We have been moving on that. Everything that was outlined in it will be steps brought forward in that presentation. One of them is going back out in a different way, breaking up, originally, we had gone out for other requests for proposals that were unsuccessful. That was in fiscal year 21. So we'll be going out for specifically just the historian, which I think will move this forward.
Commissioner, I know, I know where you are headed, and as we prepare the RFP, or whatever it is, whatever it is, we will be specific and try to be direct about the experience that will be brought to bear to do that work. I understand.
It's critical, and I appreciate you. Thank you very much for that. I think, Mo, now, now gets it and understands, there's been a pretty significant conversation from our community members who need to see that, and I just want to make sure that we're able to capture that in how we move forward. My next question has not so much to do with you, but I don't see Zaraya in here, to kind of speak to the disparities report and when we'll be getting that. Because I think, too, that as we continue to go out and bring people in, it's going to be imperative that we be mindful of how we procure people. The Heritage Trail is one of those projects in which we really could have done better in making sure that we were diverse in the individuals that we paid money to on this project. So as we move forward, I would really, really appreciate it if we were very intentional in making sure that we bring not just experts, but that we bring the diversity that's needed in everything that we do here in the city, okay?
Mr. Folsen isn't here, but he did share with us about a week or so ago that the disparity study is due the end of this month.
Mm-hmm. Approximately. Yeah, yeah, I did hear that from him, so I'm really hoping that we'll pay attention to that. And I think, you know, what I would ask of my colleagues at the table is that we make it a part of the way that we just do business, that we come back, I don't know whether it's a motion we put on the table that we say, this is just the way that it gets done here in the city of Gainesville. I do believe that the manager has a checklist, and I want to thank you for that. You started a checklist when you heard this original concern.
I did, Mr. Folsen and I did collaborate, and actually, it was his office that drafted the checklist. He shared it with me last weekend. We will be incorporating it as a part of the procurement process as they go through the solicitation process for goods and services as well as construction contracts.
Wonderful, thank you. And I definitely think that's the beginning, but certainly, when we get those results from the disparities report, I think it's going to tell us a lot of what we already know. But it'll be that foundational piece that I think will allow us to craft the necessary policy for how we do business. I will, I believe, conclude my comments. I do have one final question, though, for you, Madam Manager. We have been, I think, doing a lot of work as we've been searching for leadership for this organization. Are we still?
For GCR.
Right. So where are we in terms of solidifying that? I know that we had been out one time, we weren't satisfied with that, and I thank you for your understanding that we really need someone who is strong and who understands how to do this work, because it's a lot of money, there's a lot of need, and it requires a level of expertise. Can you speak to us about where we are in that search?
Sure. We did go out, I guess, maybe about seven or eight months ago. That search did not yield the candidates that we felt comfortable with. In fact, there was a recommendation or some other, a candidate that we wanted to move forward, that candidate dropped out. We started the search over. I have two individuals that I will be interviewing next week. I will see what that yields, and I will share if we have a successful candidate to present. But, yeah, we are in the second version of a, of a review, and we'll see if we get a candidate out of there. Thank you, Madam Manager. I'll be leaving.
Thank you. Commissioner Chestnut, thank Commissioner Book.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, I'm wondering if we could schedule at a GPC, sort of in-depth discussion on the, what Mayor Broton was talking about in terms of expertise as we move forward on specialized projects. I'm very concerned about the Eighth Avenue and Waldo Road. We probably need to look at hiring project managers who so intent, who so focused is that particular issue. So if we could schedule that very soon?
Just help me a little bit more.
I am interested in having someone who lives, breathes this project.
This project management.
Project manager. I want a project manager, because what often happens, what takes the private sector 18 months to do, it takes the general government, or government, three to five years, or three years. And so I want someone who lives and breathes this project. And I think that that can best be done by hiring a project manager with some expertise in the area.
So just if I might elaborate, Mr. Mayor, so what I, what I'm hearing is, for example, we had two major consultants brought in last year at the direction of the commission to address the cultural arts center, it's a huge project, and to address the sports plex, Aitken-Waldo, huge. The Parks Department is with existing staff, needing to serve in the project management role for both of those projects and do their normal work, their, their daily core work. And it is a lot. I'm not suggesting that they can't handle it, but that is the point. Now, I'm not saying that you're saying that they can't handle it.
No, I'm not saying that.
I'm saying that in order for them to eat, sleep, and breathe in, and, you know, just do that on a daily basis, that is not how it will work.
Thank you. So if we could bring that to GPC, because I think we need the opportunity, if we had a project manager, I'm very interested in seeing opening opportunities for facilities at the Waldo Road project. That person would be able to start developing those relationships. We have to get a policy on how we accept naming, how we accept funds, but there are lots of little particulars that need to be developed. They could be meeting with the Florida High School Athletic Association, the Alachua County Sports Center is very interested in working with whomever and trying to develop this. So we need a concentrated effort.
So how about we, I don't want to, several here you...
No, okay.
How about we agenda for the next commission meeting, a full discussion about that, so we can talk about the possibility of a project manager for this or, or EHEDE. For the Aitken-Waldo investment here, we're talking about what becomes probably more than $20 million over a multi-year period, and we're going to get a better result if, if one person is responsible for that. And probably the same on Hawthorne Road. I don't want to increase costs, but I do want somebody to be responsible and available and transparent, and that's more likely if that's what they do. So let's do that, and, and at the same thing, I just, second, Commissioner Book, and, and do, at that same time, discuss creating a policy for accepting, for pursuing and accepting corporate sponsorships, because we don't have that at this point, to my knowledge. So we should have a conversation about that as well. So, agenda for the next commission meeting.
Thank you.
And we'll include budget implications as well.
Absolutely. There's a, it's a broad discussion, we should look at all the implications of it. Thank you, Commissioner Chestnut. Commissioner Book.
Yeah, I thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this was not the focus of the questions I have for some understanding, but kind of dovetailing on what Commissioner Chestnut just talked about. Complex transformational projects require one person to coordinate all the various aspects of it, and I understand it has budgetary implications, because obviously, that's what I've spoken about many, many times. But it, but I would hope that this discussion related to that involves the fact that we do have 19 million of unexpended funds right here going forward in the next seven and a half years of this 10-year project. And it may be that the GCR can incorporate some of those project costs, and the funding stream could be somewhere within the scope of what's already there, because large projects do need a central point of contact if we're going to do them well, especially when they're this gigantic and this extensive. So that's, that's just one thing. Just from my own understanding on the budget, so we're, we're essentially three fiscal years deep in this 10-year plan, and the amendment that's going to come forward is just going to relate to the, those next seven years, right? And the, the focus of the 10-year plan will still be through fiscal year 2029?
Mr. Mayor, to answer Commissioner Book's question, the budget amendment would just be for FY '23. Because we can't do budget improvement for future years. But we wanted to adopt the spending plan so that we would build each budget around the spending. Because you can't adopt the spending plan, you just can't adopt the budget.
Understood, and a kind of second question, which is similar. So when you were talking about the 19 million in unexpended funds, those are essentially across the remainder of this 10-year plan, that we hope as time comes on, we see that we need improvement here, we need a transformational project here, that's where those funds start to be allocated in their respective fiscal years? Is that accurate?
Well, if you adopt the, the spending plan, those 19 million are already allocated within the spending plan. What that allows us, what that allows staff to do is when we bring future budgets back, it allows us to go, okay, we're recommending that we do whatever the phase of EHEDE is or the phase of Aitken-Waldo is, in, in conjunction with the spending plan that the commission has already adopted. There is no funds setting aside that aren't, once a spending plan... Once the spending plan is adopted, and, and there is already an adopted spending plan, which I think has led to some of the confusion, this is just modifying it so...
That's a good point. If I might just clarify, when the commission approved the budget back in September, they approved a budget for '23 for the GCR, but there have been changes that need to be brought to bear. That's what will come back in March in the budget amendment, the proposed changes to what was already approved in September.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, that's helpful.
And one comment I think that might help clear up some of this also, is even as early as, as last spring, when we were preparing the budget, the East Side Health and Economic Development Initiative project was not a project on anybody's radar. The only thing that we had on the radar was simply the ARPA funding for the East Side Clinic, and then it's one of those, it's one of those issues that, as we spoke to the commission, different, different opportunities aligned itself, the white battery and electric property became available, we suddenly got the FTA grant for 4.1 million, we went from just having an East Side Clinic hub that UF was, UF was going to build on their property to a funded transformative project. And so that's part of the reason for the modifications to the spending plan, so we can, we're, we're actually going to be moving pretty fast on the East Side Health and Economic Development Initiative project. We hope to break ground later this spring on the road and the clinic, depending on the development review process.
The last one just relates to these pre-2019, under the old TIF type of funds, are those also already encumbered in existing projects? It looks like they are in the slide you provided. For those separate CRAs?
Yes, sir.
The only mechanism to, to change any of these is through, example, things like a budget amendment and a full discussion. Is that accurate?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, what Commissioner Book is saying is accurate, and what, one of the things that would be important to understand is, if the commission wanted us, if a new transformative project that's not on the books comes up, we would, we would have to bring a recommendation to the commission to say, okay, in order to do this, what of these that you've already approved do you not want us to do?
Thank you, that, that's all very helpful.
I, I want to make another point, because this is, it's kind of complicated. It's all over the place. And the TIF funds, we can't move them around. They are what they are, associated with the projects that they are associated with. The other GCR funds, the commission can decide to make moves and changes, but for the TIF, it's done.
That's correct.
Thank you, and you read my mind on, if something came along in three or four years, and we wanted to add on to the East Side hub, we wanted to expand the Eighth Avenue and Waldo corridor project, what are the capabilities we have to deal with that? And I think you all have explained what that would have to do as far as process. Thank you.
And to that point, Mr. Mayor, if I may follow up again, I think one of the things we're already having discussions on with our, with our legislative person is that now that, once we approve the spending plan, are there projects the commission would like to do or would approve doing, associated with EHEDE, that we could then leverage the funding that you're going to approve to apply? you're going to approve to apply for grants? I mean, if it's a dollar-for-dollar grant, and we're already spending 2.4 million dollars to build the road, then that's already budgeted, so if that's required match, then we've already, we're already going to do it anyway. So what can we do? That's very preliminary, but just to give you an idea, based on Commissioner Book's questions, yes, there are opportunities to further leverage this money in conjunction with the spending plan.
There you go. Okay, I'll, I've got a comment, and I'll piggyback to you, Commissioner Eastman, or anybody else who is ready. It occurred to me while we were talking, when you put the dates down for 2019, that there's only one of us who was here back in 2019, which doesn't feel like all that long ago, but in the old days, before 2019, we used to have, because the CRA used to meet differently, it was still the City Commission, still the final decision maker was the City Commission, but we used to meet every two months, maybe quarterly, to make decisions specifically for the CRA, for each of the four CRA districts. The City Manager was always the Executive Director of the CRA, going back to the early days, twenty years ago, of the CRA, and that continues to essentially be the case. What we did not do over the last two, three years, was meet regularly, same players, but we did not meet regularly to talk specifically about the CRA. Things came to us every now and then, when there was a need to talk about. My hope is that on a quarterly basis, we can get back to, at the ten o'clock hour of the Commission meeting, to do an in-depth conversation about the CRA, like we're doing this morning, so that all seven of us and staff can remain focused every two or three months on this very important transformative work that we do through the CRA. Gets us back, changes our focus back to remembering exactly what it is we're doing, and it makes it easier for us to answer questions in the community, and when we're talking with other elected officials. Instead of waiting until some nebulous future time, we know there's going to be a conversation on a quarterly basis, where we can really talk about these items. That is my plan and hope going forward on that. Couple of specific questions about this. The Ayers Property Assistance Program and the My Neighborhood Program, can we get an update fairly soon about those, to just know how many families are involved in those, and what the details are? Because I think there's a lot of programs, but I want to make sure that we're using it optimally, and if we have guardrails built around those programs, that you need us to make changes on, to make them work better and more efficiently, and help more neighbors, they don't want to do that. Don't be afraid to bring that back to us, but it's simply like an agenda item.
We will.
We're not in the future about that. I'm not sure if we're prepared to do it today.
Are you? What I can speak to is, at the Joint City-City Meeting on Monday, we will be giving a presentation, doing our annual reports for all of what we have accomplished in fiscal year '22. I think a lot of this information, in addition, what we'll be doing in '23, especially around Eastside Health and Economic Development Initiative, will be brought there. Also, to make note, we are working with Housing and Community Development. All the programs that you see here are in a pilot year, so we have come up January 1st on our pilot year, and we're bringing back a robust presentation around all the housing, what we've learned, and that will be, is projected to come by the end of February.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Eastman?
Yeah, I wanted to follow up on, Commissioner Book mentioned the Waldo Road and Eighth Avenue. We have, and I've seen, heard some numbers thrown out here, there is a study that, I'm new here, so there's a study that is coming back, if I understand correctly, can, like, where are we exactly in the discussions of what we're doing with Aitken-Waldo, and what is the next steps, as we're talking about, you know, planning, you know, hiring staff and that sort of thing?
So, at a recent City Commission meeting, I don't have the exact date, the City Commission approved the ranking of the consulting firms. So currently, Rec and Parks, Roxy Gonzalez and her team are negotiating the contract with that firm, and then, once that contract is executed, then there's a series of deliverables, including public meetings and workshops, that'll come forward.
Yeah, we hired the firm. Yeah, we hired the firm already, Johnson out of Chicago.
Yeah, I just didn't know if we've executed the contract, given them a notice to proceed yet.
Yeah. Andy Person, Special Advisor, the contract's being routed for signature, so, and there is a proposed scope in the original proposal, as Mr. Mayor indicated, includes a bunch of public workshops and interviews with stakeholders, is the very starting point. So, I think too, to all the discussion about, you know, project manager, we will, we will never turn down extra help, especially for big complicated projects, so.
I just, I can only speak for myself, but until I know the scope of what we're talking about, what the different price tags are, I know, I'm very excited, it's in District Four, it is, obviously, if you, I swim my laps over there, we're going, Citizens Field's an important part of our community, figuring out how to make that go forward is going to be, I think it's a part of the Commission, what that scope's going to be, and I think we might want to figure that out before we start moving forward, what the staffing looks like, so I'm happy to have that conversation. There is a couple of things that I would have thought that maybe funds would be utilized for out of the CRA, really focusing on blight and trying to bring up the quality of our spaces, one of which is the Power District. There was an allocation, I think, of 350,000 from, in fiscal year '23. We're coming up on the ten-year anniversary thereabouts, of having a very robust, very thoughtful plan on how we move forward with the Power District, using rehabbing old buildings, improving certain infrastructure there. CRA seems like an ideal place for that funding would be coming from. If, is the thought, where would funding come from, if it's not from the CRA, and would it be possible to reallocate funds in the future, if we're able to build a public credit partnership that would allow something to happen back?
So, Mr. Mayor, currently $450,000 are allocated to the Power District. The CRA had actually selected a developer for that, but.
Many years ago.
Many years ago, the development never proceeded. So I believe at the retreat Friday, the mayor talked about having a Commission discussion on how we move forward with the whole Power District. And as I stated, anything the Commission wants to do, it's a matter of reprioritizing projects within the CRA program, and determining what we do or do not want to fund at those levels.
Another one that is blighted areas, in our downtown, is the streetery. The last Commission voted to allocate some amount of money, I don't know if that's out of general fund, or where, so where are we with the CRA, and where's that funding coming from, in terms of the streetery?
I can, I can speak to, there were actually two items that the Commission heard on their December 1st meeting related. One was an allocation for next steps for the Downtown Management Organization, and then the streetery portion, I believe was in the tune of 150 or 200,000 dollars for not just the streetery, but the entire Festival Street, as well as the Sweetwater Greenway Loop. So those things are, you know, we're working on as well for them.
And we're looking at the G-C-R-A.
G-C-R-A is a potential funding source on the management organization. The University of Florida has called and confirmed that they would be more than willing to also support the management organization portion of that, so.
So this really is just a plan?
It's a finite plan.
Like, as this lot of spaces, public places comes up, we might reallocate things into that, we may move things into this, but this is just letting the CRA know, we need to pay this out by 2029, correct? That, you know, let's start moving forward with this. Okay. Thank you for the clarity. And then, oh, College Park University Heights is in my district, there's 3.9 million in that. What, you mentioned before that all of the old TIF funds are tied up into projects, what do we currently have allocated in that, in that older CRA district?
So the TIF fundings do need to be spent in College Park University Heights, and right now, we're working with leadership to come back around how to spend that specific funding, so I think that's something that you will see here with us in this year.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Duncan Walker, did you have your hand up?
I did, I did. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So also, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for reminding us about the Ayers Property and the My Neighborhood projects, and I'm very excited, I'd love to hear what the updates on both of those will be. I always bring up the issue of marketing, because I'm always concerned about how we let our neighbors know about things, programs, just like this. So we have a brand-new marketing director, who is absolutely amazing. I had the chance to talk to her probably about a week ago, and learned about this very impressive resume, and she has jumped on board ready, willing, and able to do a lot of great things for us. I'm curious as to, have we sat down with her, figured out a marketing plan, where are we in terms of being able to let the public know about the programs that we have to offer, and just give them a general update about where G-C-R-A is, you know? I think that's, you know, that's important, too.
I couldn't answer without that, hopefully.
Mayor, Commissioner? We did meet with Jennifer Smart, she is amazing, and we discussed, actually, everything that is on this work plan, what opportunities to really get out and start communicating on the projects and the programs that we have. So in the timeline, the plan is, is that we would bring back, because they were a pilot year, a robust discussion, and then work with Jennifer from that point on, on the marketing, and additional marketing that can be done, in case there's any changes. So it'll be a perfect time to do that.
So we're in the process of pulling together a marketing plan, right?
Yes. And she, and if I might, Mr. Mayor, just, Jennifer Smart is in the Communications Department, but she is a member of every single department. Anytime we have major discussion, she is there. All of our agenda briefings, any meetings that we can pull her in, she has offices in my, has an office in my office, she has one in Communications Department, she's all over the place. So she is not an afterthought. Her function is not an afterthought.
Wonderful. Well, thank you very much. I say that, I would not believe that you would do that, Manager Curry, it's just that I know we've been functioning for a while without that, and we're driving her crazy right now.
I believe it.
And, Mr. Mayor, just a perfect example of what the manager's talking about, to Mr. Duncan Walker's point. This morning, we were preparing for the presentation, and the manager, myself, Andrew, and Ms. Smart had an impromptu discussion about, how do we market just E-Heady? So that is all being considered.
Thank you. One more thing, I, to my colleagues, I do not want us to forget about the Cultural Arts Center. Last November, we unanimously supported the creation of that. We understand that the Cultural Arts Center is not just important for its ability to draw and bring culture and art, but also for its ability, and what we recognize as a very serious need to address the core issues around violence. So I certainly want to make sure that we don't get lost in the sauce. We have a lot of wonderful things on tap. We always are discussing Aitken-Waldo, we always are discussing E-Heady, but I want to make sure that the Cultural Arts Center does not get lost. I think that the manager is going to be bringing a report, did I hear, kind of, that's that deer-in-the-headlights look, I love it. But no, 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 I do believe that you're bringing something relatively quickly, am I correct in that?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Again, that project is being worked out of Park Recreation and Cultural Affairs. You know, Roxy Gonzalez is the director, she's got the One Nation One Project, she's got Aitken-Waldo, she's got Cultural Arts, she's got a lot of things going on, and quite frankly, I'm not, I'm not saying that I love it, but I do relate to the fact that we probably do need to be specific about some project management, so we cannot have projects being stuck.
Absolutely.
Best intentions, but stuck, because, so.
I can.
We will get your report.
Thank you. Thank you very much, because that's one of the things when we start talking about funding, I mean, a project can be voted on and supported, but it doesn't get moved forward until there's some money that's attached to it. So I'm looking forward to having that discussion very soon.
And I can add, if it's okay.
We have, we have a party here.
Yeah, exactly. It's, and so we have executed the contract with AMS, who's the consultant working on the Cultural Arts Center. We've had a couple of initial meetings between staff and the company, we've, are sharing a bunch of documents that they've requested for background, and then they're going to provide, probably in the next week or so, a revised schedule that we'll share with the manager and share with the Commission as well for moving that forward. And that is, as the manager indicated, out of Parks and Rec, but it is a multidisciplinary group that's working on that, with some folks from Sustainable Development, Parks, other parts of the city to, you know, to get it done.
Thank you very much. Parks, Rec, and Cultural Affairs.
We're working.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Willis?
So, in line with the fear of perhaps things getting lost a little bit, the Housing and Community Development and Residential Improvement Programs are perhaps smaller portions of some of these larger projects, or these other larger projects like Waldo and Aitken, or E-Heady, are very large, we're talking about maybe project managers for them. I, my question is about how we are progressing and keeping focus on, with limited, we have staff vacancies and being pulled to very large projects, how we're keeping on programs like the Ayers Property, My Neighborhood, kind of the whole housing component, because we're in a housing market, at least over the past eighteen months, that has been crazy, rent's hugely going up, home prices, and there's been real demand from the community about housing, but we have some transformational projects that are not necessarily housing right now. Housing, of course, is not the full focus of G-C-R-A, and perhaps not majority, and perhaps not, I would say, significant, but it is not everything. And how we're, how we're keeping focus on that, and part of this, what we're moving a little forward, because it is a part of a transformational project, that has some partners that are coming on board now, so we need to move now, how we're keeping the focus on that, because some things might be able to be delayed, but housing delayed is our neighbors unhoused, or underhoused, or poorly housed. And so I just have a little, I'm just questioning a little bit, how we keep that focus? Part of that is hearing back on how these programs are doing currently, but how we keep that focus, so that our, so that our transformational projects don't completely take us off track of one of the largest demands of our community.
Mr. Mayor, if I might? Absolutely, absolutely. We are, when I came on, one of the first things that I did was, you know, fast-forwarded a housing framework, that moved into a work plan, that moved into an organizational change, that took all of our housing and put it in one shot. So we had some stuff specifically in G-C-R-A, and then some other items in the Housing and Community Development Department. We merged them all under one department, under one leader, and that's Cory Harris, who's here. The Ayers Property and the Neighborhood Paint, all of those programs are now housed in that one agency with his staff, focusing on the implementation of those programs. Cory, you want to speak briefly to how you're moving forward? And the fact that we do have the ARPA money, that this Commission approved, to the tune, I believe, of about eight million, and that notice of funding availability is about to go out as well. But again, all of the housing programming is focused under one director, with his staff doing the implementation.
Thank you, Ms. Curry. Cory Harris, Housing Community Develop, excuse me, Housing Community Development Director. We have project managers specifically for those housing initiatives, so we have individuals who are focused on a daily basis as their core duty around those initiatives.
Mr. Mayor, if I may follow up on that a little further. So when those, when those projects were housed in G-C-R-A, there was two project managers assigned to them? When the manager created the one housing department, those two G-C-R-A managers, or those two G-C-R-A project managers who ran those programs, also moved over there? So they're still dedicated to those programs?
Very good. Thank you. Commissioner Book?
Just just quick, I'll say, good reminder, Commissioner Willis, that we don't lose focus on the existing big projects when we're looking forward six, seven, eight years so, so Dale, thank you for that.
Okay. Let's open this up to members of the public, who may want to comment specifically on the G-R, the G-C-R-A project and budget update. Remember, it's three minutes, and the light system is your friend, and you know this, but it's just for everybody. As long as it's green, you have plenty of time. When it turns yellow, you have one minute or less left, and when it hits red, we need to wrap up.
Green is hardly enough, three minutes is hardly enough time, but I will try to cover as much as possible. Speaking as a member of G-C-R-A, well, after the meeting I blew off this week, and I confess, willfully blew off for something else I wanted to do. I was at Smatters Library instead of their meeting, but I, I want, I'm not speaking on behalf of G-C-R-A, this is my personal comments. Overall, I want to remind you, invite you, urge you to use your prerogative over G-C-R-A recommendations. And I appreciate that so much of what boards and committees do, as someone who's been on a dozen or so, that so much of what boards and committees do is carried forward by the Commission, but you really need to exercise your prerogative. And I think that in the case of G-C-R-A, there's so much more needs than there is funding, that we should that we should prioritize. I think we can cover, I think the funds will be gone on the highest priorities before we get things, or we should put to the last those things over which most hearts and minds don't, do not rest in agreement. And we touched on a couple of those. The redevelopment at Waldo and Eighth, the Duval neighborhood is not pleased or seeing its future very well fulfilled in that as the proposal exists so far. The clinic on the East Side, from an entity that is not being a friend of the city as far as I'm concerned, and I could go into that more depth if I had more than three minutes. But you've had deep research from dissenters other than just me about how the East Side needs PCPs over casting texts, and yet the city is going to get to pay a big chunk of what they're so-called giving us. The Heritage Trail, that needs to be drawn out. Sometimes when you call for consultants, you get groups whose highest skill is developing compelling bid packages, and the ones who have really done it on the ground, who show development, in this case, like the director of the Black Archives in Tallahassee. They're not chasing contracts, they're doing the work and proving, so you're not getting the bid from them, and you're spending big money. And the Power District, as someone who lives there, you had two failed developers, and I liked the second one with the 30% affordable housing, but the neighborhood was never pleased with that. On 15th Street, if the city's more northerly portion of southeast 15th Street was beautiful all the way down to the border, that would help compel the county. So much more to say that three minutes won't permit, but please exercise your prerogative. Examine these choices deep, more deeply, and consult the community more as always in a constructive way.
Anyone else want to speak to this particular item? Okay, we'll bring it back to the commission. One of the things that was mentioned with Power District, and I really would like us to have time as a commission to talk about, to, to understand where we are, where we have been in the past, what the opportunities moving forward are, and to develop a plan for how we expect it to move forward. I think that is probably best done at a workshop, so we can have an open discussion about this amongst ourselves. So if there's an objection, I would like us to get that scheduled as calendars work. If it's not a this month or next month kind of thing, but, but it is, I think, a discussion that we need to have unless somebody has an issue. Mr. Buck?
My objection would be to limit additional meetings on the thing since we, since we have lots, and attempt to figure out where it best fits to have the discussion, but not layer additional.
That may not be the will of the government, just to say something.
So does anybody want to make a motion to, well, let's get a motion for, for all of it, and if that's included, we'll, we'll.
I move the City Commission adopt the G-C-R-A's proposed spending plan through fiscal year 2029.
And is there an interest in adding the workshop?
Yes, absolutely, including a workshop to discuss more in-depth of Power District and how we move forward.
And you're good on the second one?
Yes.
All right, any discussion on that? Mr. Buck?
I would just ask that we consider in the scheduling of the workshop that maybe we dovetail existing meeting or put that in our existing framework. So even if it's additional hours, it's, it's where we already have something potentially scheduled.
Mr. Sutcliffe?
Thank you, Mr. Buck, I hear you. However, something like the G-C-R-A is huge, it's millions and millions upon millions of dollars, it impacts thousands of people. We, we have had a problem in the past where we try to stack issues, even if they're somewhat related, it gets muddy, and at hour six, when we finally get to an issue, we are not giving it the, the focus it deserves and that the public expects from us. So I really think a separate workshop where we break down bit by bit and focus only on G-C-R-A is the better way to go here, just to give it fresh attentive care, and so that our neighbors know that's the one that they have to go to. They don't have to wait as we talk through another four, five, 10 items to get to it.
It's a good point. We don't want to lose focus on big issues, merely because too many issues to focus on. I understand that. It's a good point.
And just to draw it in, I mean, what, what the workshop was specifically is on the Power District, which I've come to the conclusion that, I mean, it was, we talked about our downtown strategic plan, that having this large, very blighted area directly in your, I guess directly east of our downtown is one of the things that really sucks the most amount of energy out of our downtown. It's been, it's a can of worms that has, you can keep pulling back the layers of the onion on the Power District, and it just seems to get what, that much more in-depth. We could have a thousand, 100 workshops on this, and it would be hard to get to the bottom of it all. I agree that where we can put things on, say, GPC, where we talk about things more in-depth would be useful, but for something as in-depth as the Power District, it probably makes sense for us to, to have that scheduled at this one particular time. It's something I would really like to see, at least in my term, that we make real sizable progress on. Yeah.
I will tell you all that one of the first decisions that, that I was involved in, I think it was the summer of 2017, Mr. Ariel and I were, were here today, we heard presentations, big thick presentations on the Power District, and awarded a, awarded a bid winner. And after a couple of years, it just kind of faded away, and they, the, the people that we awarded the bid to spun part of their business off, and that killed the contract. And I'm not sure if they were aware that that would be the unintended consequence, but since then, we have drifted since at least 2018 on this, and the community, I think, expects us to tell us what's going to happen with this enormous piece of property in the middle of our city. So I'm looking forward to that. All right, the mission, the motion on the table is to accept staff recommendation and to schedule a workshop regarding specifically the Power District. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. That's unanimous. And we are through with our business for the morning session. Thank you for your attention this morning. I, I like the opportunity to, to drill down on G-C-R-A issues alone in this morning session. So now we have an opportunity to head upstairs and wherever you need to be against work hours. And we are.
The gift of time.
We are turning to a clock.
Good afternoon, we'll call the one o'clock session to order. And Matt Clark, looks like our first item, you want to introduce our first item here? And I'll follow up.
Our first item is Gainesville history moment.
So, we're starting a new, I hope, tradition. And we have a history moment about Gainesville history. We've invited Vivian Philer to come talk to us today, because I can't think of a better person to talk to us about Gainesville history. And this will be at the one o'clock hour, the first item on the agenda consistently. We'll see how it works out. I think it's going to be a really useful thing for all of us to learn a little bit as we come to these commission meetings. So, without further ado, thank you, Ms. Philer, for being with us. It's a pleasure to have you here.
Well, thank you. I thank you for designing just the room for me from downstairs here, from upstairs here. So, that's it. But it is my pleasure, Mr. Mayor and members of the commission, to be here to speak of the history of Gainesville. I do love the history of Gainesville. I love Gainesville. I will also always tell you the truth, won't I? Well, I don't like what you're doing to Gainesville with all these tall buildings, so I want to preserve its history in that we mark the places that are significant, where we are replacing them with big buildings. And I say that because I really like to give a history moment that has to do with African-American history. I know it best. I want to talk about a very important man, Sergeant Lewis, we called him, who was an African-American officer, officer, one, riding a bicycle with no gun and being the only officer on our beat. But a man who demanded respect, a man who took care of his people, and a man who rode around the streets of Gainesville in the 50s and the 60s and was not recognized as an official officer of the GPD. So, we have come a long way from there. We have not reached the places we need to go. And I could give you more about that, but I think it's just more important that we document the history as it happened. And that history happened with Gainesville sending out a man to govern the law and to enforce the law in the African-American community from a bicycle. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. So, we'll look forward to this at every meeting, where we're not going to ask Ms. Philer to do every single one, but she and Donna Waller have agreed to work with folks they know in the community to bring forward these Gainesville history moments. Matt Clark.
Our next question.
Oh, and Mr. Mayor, if you would also invite the Matheson Museum or folks from the Matheson, we'd have some interesting questions.
Our next item is early public comment. And first sounded individual is named Johnny Booth.
Now, I would remind everyone that with all public comment, you have three minutes. The green light means you're good to go. The yellow light means you have one minute left, and the red light means we wrap up. And this is early public comment on agenda items. Something on the agenda that you don't want to stick around for, and you're going to speak to that, this is the time to do that very specifically. So, something on the agenda later today. Go ahead.
All right. Ad hoc, sovereign worldwide global American kingdom, first true actual living real government. I am sovereign despot holder in decorum, King Johnny Booth. Uniform commercial code one dash three oh eight, exclusive executive lawful soul creator true law, Johnny Law, safety first, issuer giver, true currency, worldwide forces, secured creditor, R positive. I just had to do updates and reminders. On human rights, Universal Declaration for Human Rights, I see that the Human Rights Meeting was canceled, even though you all still need to be talking about that, because each union which calls itself a state adopted the Universal Declaration for Human Rights. Okay, violations done by state, state S T A T E is still known as human trafficking and domestic terrorists of its people, according to the Homeland Security Factbook. Democrats conspiracy to genocide US citizens, to be a citizen, in all caps, C I T I Z N, citizen capital letter, regular, citizen regular, is to be enslaved insolvent statered to quote unquote state, state, victims for being corporate human traffic. Blue campaign, blue star, blue notice. Remember pushing your way, remember to push your way through for King Trump and Pence. Global government reforms, police reforms overseen by Sheriff's Association, education reform, from sort them out system to a bring forth knowledge system. Blue campaign, human trafficking, many different forms and ways and descriptions, exploitation, wages, labor, force participation, trafficking of social security numbers versus certificates, forced neutralization, sex trafficking, modern day slavery, from the major human trafficking, kidnapping, sales, enslavement, baking fraudulent insolvent, debtor system, transportation against will or consent. Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Booth, Mayor, you going to count that as general public comment? Because I don't believe that was to anything on the agenda later on, as it appears I can tell.
It should be on your agenda, because like...
Okay, yes, yeah, okay. Thank you for being here. Is anyone else speaking to it?
I want to be on commercial last, so actual.
Okay, all right, next item.
Our next item is general public comment, and our first speaker is Debbie Martinez.
Okay, general public comment, this is half an hour. Is allotted for this, it's three minutes at a time. Again, green light means you're good to go, yellow light means there's one minute left, and red light means we wrap up.
Debbie Martinez. One can search far and wide to see how other city commissions handle public input for people speaking during their meetings, but what really matters is what has worked for so very long, for decades, and very well for our city residents in bringing back those citizen-friendly rules. Those rules allowed people to speak three times during general public comment to present critical data and offer suggestions that helped the commission shape good policy. And it did not cause a problem with late night meetings. As the new mayor has identified, there is a severe problem in regards to public trust. Allowing people once again to speak three times if they wish during regular city commission meetings on anything not on the agenda will go a long way in building trust. As Ms. Tana Silva and others stated at the last meeting, ever since many, ever since many on the previous commission recently voted to make drastic rule changes for people speaking to silence dissent, it created a bad hostile environment. Back in the late 80s, we once had a wise and thoughtful man serving as District One City Commissioner, who often would say to members on the commission, you may not want to hear what citizens have to say, but it's your job to listen. Our honorable District One Commissioner never tried to silence them or cut them off in the middle of a sentence. He and colleagues were lenient with the public and allowed people to complete their thoughts, even if it took a few seconds longer. The abusive tactics used against residents recently here at City Hall by some on the commission are disgraceful. What good people of Gainesville want to know is whether this administration, like the PO administration, is going to continue down this abusive road of shutting up good people who want to participate in good government. Will you answer the question, Mr. Ward? Thank you.
Our next speaker is Nathan Scott.
So, before we move on, I should true to what I was saying at the retreat. I do want to try to answer questions. I'm not sure exactly what the question was. I'm happy to talk with you after the meeting if you have a specific question for it.
Is the mic on? Didn't sound like the mic was on.
Yeah, they're on.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioners Nathan Scott. So, as reported by the Gainesville Sun, with respect to the Gainesville Country Club, the golf course closure came as power was turned off in July by Gainesville Regional Utilities due to unpaid bill of nearly $39,000. Who's going to pay for that unpaid GRU bill? GRU customers in the form of higher electric rates? More importantly, why didn't GRU require a deposit? Why did GRU allow unpaid bill to become so large before disconnecting them for non-payment? So, I'd like to know whether the unpaid balance has been paid, and if not, what legal action has the city taken to protect the interests of GRU customers? Specifically, did GRU seek a judgment lien for the unpaid balance? Perhaps a judgment lien could have been, could have provided a basis to foreclose on property, subordinate to the other secured creditors. Alternatively, if the debtor filed for bankruptcy, did GRU file a claim against the estate and seek priority in the bankruptcy estate? Because obviously, there's interest to the trustee of preserving the assets, making sure the building doesn't mold, which provide the basis for not only getting paid in full, but having adequate deposit to keep the lights on while the property's in bankruptcy, if that's the case. But again, those are the questions that need to be answered, rather than this commission talking about double it salaries on top of nine and a half, 9.6 percent automatic salary increase. But this commission excels at virtue signaling, gaslighting GRU customers, it doesn't focus on hardships of not only people paying their bills, but collecting debt that shouldn't have gotten to that level. That's just unacceptable. It's not prudent utility management. I know there's bad debt, but you didn't get to $39,000 in one month, I don't think. Additionally, the time has come for the Gainesville City Commission to mandate police clearances for persons seeking to access services provided by Grace Marketplace. As reported by the Elatural Chronicle, Grace has become a magnet for violent crime. You had employees being assaulted, that's on you guys, because of your failed policies. Again, well-intended, but you guys made a big issue in not requiring police clearances, and you keep attracting drifters and all kinds of inviting, facilitating, enabling violent crime in the city of Gainesville. Homicides, shootings, violent crimes, day after day, and article after article in Elatural Chronicle, Grace Marketplace has become the lowest common denominator. So, I think that it's incumbent upon this commission to help not only protect Grace residents, Grace staff, but the community at large by mandating something that's useful in life, rather than virtue signaling and requiring police clearances. I think that's a reasonable ask in light of protecting Grace residents, staff, and our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. If you would give Mr. Scott back that information about the Country Club. I'm kind of interested in how we pursue commercial accounts associated with that as well.
Yeah, we have a dunning process and a collection process, and use outside agencies to assist in that. I don't know the latest update on that particular one, but I'll provide that to the commission and Mr. Scott.
Mr. Mayor, that's not what I asked, though. I asked about legal action. Thank you.
I'll provide that as well.
Our next speaker is Ms. Beatty.
Good afternoon, Commissioners Joe Beatty. I attended the retreat last week. It's a shame that this commission, I assume it's the mayor and the clerk, because it's been said publicly, is the mayor and the clerk were the ones that were organizing that and setting the agenda, et cetera. It wasn't recorded. And that's a great disservice to the public who was not in attendance, was not able to attend, and too frequently looks to see what transpires at different meetings. That meeting happened to put forth a lot of good information as to how the city operates, how the different departments. There was discussion about the rules, the rules that have been changing over the years. Mentioned that the city attorney has 20 iterations of those rules. Public records request I got, I haven't counted them, I'm told there's 17 or 18, and that's just going back to 2014. I've been here for 15 years, and I've watched the citizens' participation be thwarted, and your rules changed to reduce them. But I think it's a crime that you did not record this meeting. I do have a recording that I took as much as I could get on my devices. Learned it's not being recorded, so if anybody wants, feel free to talk to me. I'd be happy to share what I've got. But there was very good information, some good suggestions, which I'll refer to later. But if you people are serious about wanting to get the public trust, you really govern yourself a little better, make sure things like this happen, make sure that as you make changes to the rules, as you look at your processes and procedures, which in large often aren't followed, you know, look to changing it so that we can have public participation, so that our input is valued. I'd reiterate what Ms. Martinez said, there was no problem with citizen comment earlier. We didn't need sign up cards. We could get up, and it worked. And the rules have devolved over the years to push the citizens out. And I thank you for putting on that retreat, but I really, you know, have a problem with the fact that the mayor and clerk perhaps have decided not to record that. So, thank you. You'll hear more from me later.
Our next speaker is Reverend Ron Rollins.
Who's phone is this? Good afternoon. I want to thank you for this three-minute moment on this public platform to offer my observations and advice on Ron Rollins pastor of Greater Bethel AME Church. Over the past few years, I've observed this commission serve as fuel to chaos. In the late summer, I chose to take a mental health break from a tendency to commission meetings to inform voters of what choices would empower this body of servants to actually empower this body of servants to not just use catchy words like neighbors, but actually fulfill the biblical meaning of neighbor as defined in the Gospel of Luke, chapter 10, verses 36 through 37. And it just says, "One who shows mercy." The past commissions were more concerned with leaving a selfish legacy than showing mercy. They laid out the red carpet to developers who overwhelmed and overshadowed communities while fast pacing gentrification of historically black neighborhoods that were now perceived as urban delicacies. And they had the audacity to add the word neighbor to their public vernacular. Maybe one day someone will make a recommendation to place a referendum on the ballot to change the name of the city of Gainesville to Poeville. My advice to this commission, we are experts to do things that we don't have the ability or the capacity to do ourselves, and that's a good thing. But after a year of on-the-job observation, I advise that one of you in the near future make a motion to offer Miss Cynthia Curry a contract to be our city manager. She came in here less than a year ago and has led us from a place of embarrassment, underperformance, and chaos to a place where we belong. You can pay someone a quarter million dollars to recommend who to hire, but I challenge you to look at the leadership she has shown as interim. Use your abilities and capacities to determine from the facts that you have seen with your own eyes, heard with your own ears, and researched from your own records, and redirect those funds and those dollars somewhere else, and hire Miss Cynthia Curry as our next city manager.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, charter officers, my name is Kate Kamowitz. I have a handout that I will give to the clerk, I presume, after my remarks are done. I'm sorry I missed the opportunity to comment on issues that I will not be around for, particularly with regard to salary. Let me go right to the heart of the one issue that I do want to discuss, which is to make Gainesville a butterfly city again. And I'm sorry that my colleague and co-founder, Rob Johnson, no longer lives in Gainesville, though he maintains a house here. I'm asking you at the outset, like an attorney warden, don't blame my client, which is the city, for its spokesperson, me. I don't expect to be considered popular. I do expect people to focus on the issue of Gainesville having been a butterfly city and having earned credits internationally and nationally. Then apparently, because I somehow offended people, it was taken aback, taken away in 2017. Commissioner Willis asked me, in response to my request, that he wants to know more about Butterfly City. This is a new commission. Only the mayor knows what I'm talking about. Really, the others may know something about it. But the mayor not only helped to get rid of Butterfly City, but to this day has never explained why. I'm asking you only, after you've seen the handouts, to consider putting it on the agenda. You can vote it down at some point. What's it making disappear is a travesty for the city and for its citizenry, that this is an idea that's exciting, particularly now, because the monarch butterfly focuses nationally and internationally on issues of climate change particularly, that it is getting extinct. The reports are clear, and it is also, I would argue, substituting for the polar bear as the real symbol of the canary in the minefield, so to speak, of being the first to be, if the monarch disappears, if its journey disappears, we will melt the earth, it is a lot more trouble than we already know it to be. Gainesville can use this issue to get back on the forefront of the climate change issue. You guys have a wonderful, out of that, adoption of the Green New Deal, but we've got to go beyond that. Butterfly City puts you back on the map with regard to recognizing climate issues being visible in the public. And since you already were the first butterfly city, you will, so to speak, leapfrog the number of monarch cities and other butterfly cities, one recently in Arkansas, that have come forward to... I also would advocate that you consider a sister-city relationship if you do become a butterfly city with your comparable first butterfly city.
Mr. Kamowitz, please wrap up. We gave everybody three minutes, and you've gone over that.
I'm sorry.
Please wrap up. We give everyone three minutes, and you've gone past that.
I'm going on that, and I'm sorry. Can I get this to the clerk?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Thank you so much. I had two, one in front and one in back. Obviously, one in the... Thank you so much.
Okay, all right, next item, Matt Clark.
Our next item is 2023-45, appointments to Development Review Board and Store Preservation
All right, Ms. Bryant, do you have anything to present with that, or...
Hi, Kristen Bryant. So, I don't have anything to present. I did invite all of the candidates to be here. I understand most of them could not be here, except that Ms. Philer is here.
All right, so we have, thank you, Ms. Bryant. So, we have, let's go ahead and take Store Preservation Board first. We have two advocates for one partial term which expires June 1st of this year. Ms. Danaria is not with us, is that accurate? Okay. Ms. Philer is here. Ms. Philer, would you like to make a comment on this?
Mr. Mayor and members of the commission, I have, as I expressed before, a great interest in the history of Gainesville, Florida. I'm particularly interested in making sure that as the history is written, African-Americans are not left out. So, I think being on this board is going to allow me to work with the people who are doing a great job to integrate the history as it should be and bring up some of the things that aren't there. I'm a civil rights worker, I walk the streets. I know there are some of my friends who are still alive who walk the streets. I think looking at that history and getting it documented into Gainesville's history is very important to the historical perspective of our city, and I'd love to be a part of that.
Press your little heart.
I am really sorry that Ms. Rodriguez is not here. I would usually like to try to hear from as many people as possible. But what I would like to offer is the fact that I have been knowing Ms. Philer since before I was in the earth. I say that because for many, many years, my family has known her, the work that she has done in this community has really spoken for itself. She has blazed a lot of trails in terms of the history, and one of the, I think, shining lights, and one of the incredible things that she has done in recent history, because she's done a lot of wonderful things, is she gave us the Cotton Club Museum. And they are doing some amazing work. We thank you for that. We know the heavy lift that that was, and your resilience in that effort. Ms. Philer is absolutely amazing. It does not go unnoticed, particularly as far as I'm concerned. You've been a great inspiration to me. I remember being a young woman watching you and admiring you. And I always felt blessed to have you a part of the community, being such a wonderful voice of reason. And I just simply would be honored to make the motion to accept Ms. Philer.
Is there a second?
I'd be honored to second it.
Okay. Commissioner Booth, did you have a comment?
Just that both candidates here, when looking at them, had some very good...
Just that both candidates here, when looking at them, had some very good credentials, but there is no peer to Ms. Byler in this regard, purity.
Any other commissioners? This is administrative, Dan?
Yes.
All right, so it's administrative. We will move to a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Welcome to the Store Preservation Board, Ms. Byler.
Thank you very much.
All right, so we will move on to Commissioner Buck. Yeah, I think he is next. We have two candidates, and they both, I think, sent emails indicating they did not be here, both Mr. Kamowitz and Mr. Robinson. There are three full terms expiring 11/1/25, and two applicants.
I think that makes it easier for us. I'd like to reappoint Mr. Rick Kamowitz and Mr. Mark Robinson and advertise for that remaining spot. It's two and a half years on there. We got time to find a, like, a nice other someone to get out there and have.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other commissioners? Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have two appointments.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, as we are making appointments, I'd like to ask the clerk staff to indicate the diversity on boards as we, as people apply, because I think we're very interested in having representation from all groups across the city.
When we see it, or historical proof?
I think when the commission sees it, so that you can look for diversity, making sure that it's spread, that representation.
Absolutely. Without objection, we certainly charge him with that. Okay, next item, Madam Clerk.
Our next item is 2022-75A, Commissioner Ed, both discussion of commission salaries.
Commissioner Buck?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you to the clerk for providing some of the backup. So that you know, Mr. Mayor and colleagues, the backup was provided with significant research that was done by the preceding commission. I think Commissioner Chestnut, you may have assigned some of that research, and I can't remember, Mayor Protem, if you did, but there were some documents that were put in as backup by Lamia Pudrati, who's the intern, and our policy oversight coordinator, Morgan Spicer. So I appreciate that, because that's the predicate for what we're discussing now. You know, I remember in the agenda review and in day one, we took up some kind of meaty and weighty matters and made some votes that are going forward, and we probably have several facing us that are coming up, and this is one. And the reason for that is simply because for big city commission and policy and vision matters, often things like the timing of something, which might have been mentioned in preceding conversations related to budget, the community piece and how they view what we do with our community and how we act and how we govern is critical, and then there's this concrete piece on top, which is budget. And once in a while, those three things also have a nexus, and in this particular case, I think our salaries, I don't think I've ever discussed my salary ever in my employment. So this is unique. This is very unique, where you have a board that discusses that, but here's a nexus where you have a timing piece that's probably going to impact us greatly. You have a community engagement piece, and there's plenty of opinions, I think, across the board on this. I know I even received one email from a community leader that advocated for the salary increase. So I think that's really interesting. The vast majority of people I spoke to or saw, or saw, going back to the preceding commission, make up, were probably not in favor of that very, very large increase. And so that's my sense also, that's the community piece. And then the budget piece here is large. The anticipated impact for us potentially raising our salaries on the October 1, 2023 timing is between, and Madam Clerk, you or Ms. Spicer can correct me, but is between $290,000 and $403,000 in the combined impact to the city for us raising our salaries at that October 1, 2023 date. This is, notwithstanding the approximate 9% increase that was, has already been awarded us. I think, while that may not sound modest, I think, given the fact that the preceding city commission went for years without a raise and was attempting to provide something in the way of value for people who are operating here, I don't oppose that, but I know you have some backup there, and I don't want to dominate the conversation. The one backup, by the way, that was put in, I think, late, would not be the fault of the clerk. It would be because I'm learning the timing and frame. So I have a memo that I just thought would be important to kind of be more efficient with your time, and laid out some of the main considerations in discussing what we'd like to do with salary, and I'll stop there. I am prepared to make a motion, but I thought it's probably important to hear from colleagues first before determining what that motion may look like.
So what we had been discussing is, if possible, we're going to try to hear after presentation and hear from the community before we move on to a motion, whenever possible. Are there any commissioners who want to speak to it before we ask for input from the board? Commissioner Willis?
One particular question or clarification is the years without a raise, and that is outside of the charter process that is much attached to Consumer Price Index. So it's not that the city commission has not had rates, but that it has been by the charter process that is attached to Consumer Price Index, which is apolitical. It's, you know, whatever the federal government tells us the Consumer Price Index is, that's what those annual raises are. In the past 15 years, we have gone through periods where, in essence, inflation was very, very low, 1%, 2% a year. So I just want to make sure that we, when we talk about the existing, the previous raise process, we don't leave out the fact that there was a process, apolitical in how it is raised, but it is definitely correct that that process had not been changed in many, many years, what we now call a raise, you know, that process hasn't been changed.
Commissioner Buck?
So, Mr. Buck, I looked through the memo that you put in on diversity data, and as far as I can tell, it only gives the diversity of employment or occupation claimed, not occupation actually had, which are two different things, I would say. But I think we just mentioned, we want to see the diversity on our boards reflect our city. I think we want the diversity of this board to reflect our city. And I'm just going to base it off the previous election, the cycle that just finished. We had 14 total candidates across three seats. One was a woman. We had, by my count and guesstimate, five under the age of 50 for a town that's skewed much younger. We had two, at least, open members of the LGBTQA community, two African-Americans, and one Hispanic. That doesn't sound very reflective, and I do think if we're going to talk about, you know, there is diversity, we need to talk about how there really isn't. There might be diversity of employment. Sure, you can luck into a job, you can know people, and you can work really hard, you can get to a job by a number of means, but your job doesn't say who you are. You've had any number of careers, sit at these chairs, but the type of people, the people that reflect our community are sometimes missing. So if we are going to look at that diversity, I think we need to look at what have we been missing historically, and I think we can speculate as to why. It's hard to do it, as Commissioner Willis said, when historically, for several years, the salary has remained pretty stagnant, pretty low, and it's difficult for those who are already at a disadvantage financially through centuries of purposeful disadvantage to then choose to be at a disadvantage. So I just, I wanted to point out that issue in the data, that, well, it's good to know what people, what their profession is. I need to know who they are and if they're representing our city.
That's a very fair point. When you talk about aspects of access, inclusion, and diversity, you can cross it across many different demographics. The reason this particular focus was on profession was because some of the previous commission discussion was specific to whether you may have the wealthy or the elite or the retired that are basically your only categories of people, as opposed to some of the immutable characteristics that you're talking about. So that's why the research was that based. They just did some research base and really took a look at websites and see how did people categorize themselves. Your point's well taken on that. I can tell you, anecdotally, going back 10 or 15 or 20 years, I've been in the city a long time, a couple of people at the table have been in here longer than myself, and the characteristics of the elected board have been, in my estimation, this is an opinion-only, very diverse across a wide variety of demographic, including some of the ones you just mentioned.
I recognize that.
But the, and so I think that's a good thing, but clearly, this was representative of trying to determine profession, so we were trying to make sure that the folks who may be able, the people who may be interested in pursuing elected service, would not feel excluded based on the fact that it may be, you know, a salary aspect.
So, well, I recognize those points, and that 10, 20 years ago, you did consistently keep that diversity. It becomes harder, given a housing crisis, a younger generation that's horrifically disadvantaged to their peers, just increase of the cost of everything, mounting student debt. Commissioner Willis is that he's 40, and even he, I'm sure, has student debts, has difficulties being here. So 20 years ago is 20 years ago. The reality faced by candidates today, or potential candidates today, are not the same difficulties faced by candidates we had 20 years ago. They are making vastly different choices.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So I'm going to ask, even though we're not in the commission chamber, this is a commission meeting. If you would please direct your remarks. Chair, I'll recognize you when I finish your time to speak. Any other commissioners? Want to make a comment, Commissioner Willis?
To add to the, and I didn't get to say this because I was focused on the process as opposed to part of your memo test, is that some of that diversity that I think, I think I saw or didn't see was people at stages of their career, because a program coordinator at 22 versus a program coordinator at 60 are two different people, and a program coordinator with two children at 30 is decidedly different than a program coordinator at 60 with, I don't know, four grandkids that they occasionally take care of. And so the family structure is something that is far harder to track with our data, but probably is just as important to look at who it is that even decides to get in the ring to run.
Commissioner Reese?
Oh, no, scratch that. I mean, I can say something.
Was that a good scratch?
Yeah. You had it on my ear. I, you know, Commissioner, you made a good point. I've never been in a situation quite like this where I have to choose my own salary. I mean, I run my own business, so I choose to either reinvest in my business or help pay my own bills. That's a little bit different, because it's, you know, you're reinvesting in your own business. This is, you know, a very odd situation to be in, and so when I think about decisions like this, I think through, we're all servants here, we are all here to serve the public, and what do our votes not impact us so much as impact how we are giving to the community? Because we are leaders in this community, we have a lot of, there's a lot of expectations that people have on us, and I think it has always been my belief, even when we served on the Charter Review Commission, that this should be, if, there should be a full-time person sitting in this seat at the Charter Review Commission. We're talking about both salaries and hiring staff. Having a staff person is a solution to this, where you would have a full-time person that is in there, knowledgeable about each issue, and answers directly to a part-time person. Our charter does not allow that. So this is where we are, and I think the benefit of us being full-time here is important. We oversee an enormous amount of things. We could, I mentioned this to you, Tony, you could spend your whole life just learning water wastewater. You probably know 20% of how to do water wastewater. We make decisions on a huge breadth of issues that matter deeply to a lot of people, and taking the time to know that, to vote on it, to have the background information, takes time, and I think we owe it to our constituents to take that time. Our constituents want to know us. We're, there's a lot of great community outreach and community engagement people at the city, but at the end of the day, people want to talk to decision makers. We need to be there and approachable, and people need to be able to speak to us. We need to have office hours where that is going on, and we need to be out talking to experts, not just internally, but out in the community. All of this takes quite a bit of time, and I'm happy, when I decided to run, I was happy to make this, I was going to spend full-time on this, whether you paid me part-time salary or a quarter salary or whatever that was. I don't think I can ask my fellow commissioners to do that, I think, and I don't think we can ask future commissions to do that in the same way. I think it's, it is important that we have someone in here full-time, that we dedicate a full-time to this, and so I'm happy to discuss what that salary is, even though it's incredibly uncomfortable discussion to have about what you'll pay yourself, but I fully maintain that this should be a full-time job, and I think our constituents deserve for us to be doing that.
I'll come back around to you in a second, because I want to make a comment here. Just point out procedurally that we don't have in front of us a recommendation to set a salary. That change was made by ordinance last fall, just to make that clear, that this is not an open issue. We would need to, if we chose to make a change, then it would be changed in order to bring me a new ordinance forward for two readings, once again, to be entirely clear about this. So, Commissioner Buck?
I think to Commissioner Ed's point, I think we all got an email yesterday. One of our neighbor walked in, wanted to talk to one of us. No one was here. No one was available, and I think that says a lot where, if you are a parent, so we have commissioners, like in the past, you have issued childcare, it's expensive, shelters expensive. You either, you know, are here the times that you can and pay childcare for those hours of needing, and then you have to be with your kid, or have them with you, or you're here. And so that's, time is valuable. I think it's the only resource everybody has, but it's not had completely, given how much value you put on that time. And so we want folks to be here consistently, to hold those office hours, to just give someone always. We talked about, for instance, someone always being available to answer emails. We want someone always here to read a person if they have a question or concern, and walk into one of our offices to be heard. That requires that a person be here. And if you're trying to maintain another job or have part-time work or have literally anything else that you're trying to do as a parent, as a parent in Gainesville, that's near impossible, unless you are incredibly lucky or incredibly lucky, or you're going to go back to lucky. There's probably be a lot more luck than golf at that point, to have that much time and availability. And so when I decided to take, when I decided to run for office, it was pre-COVID, the world was very different, and I accepted, like, cool, I'm going to do it. And then I got elected, and we shut down everything. So it's a very different world than the one I signed up for, and yet I remain. If we want, and we've acknowledged that the world has changed vastly in the last three, four years, if we want the future of this commission to be diverse, to be reflective, to be working parents, to be a single mother who knows that it's a very different circle, to be a small business owner, to be not the status quo of power in the U.S. for centuries, we need to make it workable and livable for those who come after us. And yet, it's an uncomfortable conversation. No one likes talking, and I'm pretty sure it stems from trying to stifle workers' opinions to share salary, so no one knows just how badly they're getting ripped off. So on my side, working a lot of workers, it's like, yeah, no, you talk about salary. And then you find discrepancies, and it's great. It's like, I'm doing triple the work you are and getting kind of less. We do a lot of work that other cities don't do. We run so many systems that I lose track when I try to list them all. If we want someone to come here and learn that and do it well for four years, that is a very large financial commitment to set aside your career. Like, women panic about taking, you know, three months off from their career to take care of their newborn, let alone four years, and what that does to someone's career and projection. But that is, that is a huge ask for people who come after us. So, yeah, it's uncomfortable, but someone has to have that conversation, or the future of this commission is not going to be great.
So I'll note again that we had that conversation last fall as the previous commission. I think it's important to be aware of that. Okay, so what I'd like to do now is hear from the public, and then come back, and we'll hear any motions that anyone wants to possibly make. Do we have a sign-up motion for this?
Debbie Martinez. Yes, Debbie Martinez. Hopefully, this meeting is being recorded. Am I correct in saying that, that this meeting and the comments being made at this table are being recorded today? Am I correct?
Yes, they are being recorded.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. You can fool all the people some of the time. You can fool some of the people all the time, but you cannot fool all the people all the time. Sorry. Let's talk about diversity over the last couple of years. Ms., female, MS, female, G.G. Simmons. Ms., Gail Johnson, female. Mr. Charles Mr. Charles Gospin. How about looking at some of that? That wasn't back in the Stone Age. That was recently. And we were big, city commissioners were getting paid less than they're getting paid now. Absorb a little bit of that. The data is clear. On average, your pay is already. On average, your pay is already higher than other weak mayor cities in Florida. Even before, before your 9% pay raise. And you want to go even higher. This is an abuse of power. At least four of you are turning public service into a private money-making proposition. Just because you can does not make it right. Thank you. And thank you for recording this meeting.
Next speaker is Nathan Scott.
Good afternoon, Mayor Commissioners, Nathan Scott. First and foremost, I want to thank Commissioner Ed Book for bringing this item back before the commission. Again, what happened was an abuse of power. It's giddy outgoing commissioners, having absolute power, absolute power corrupts. And they decided to double their salaries on top of the 9.6% automatic increase that they received under city ordinance. Again, please stop the excuse-making and hypocrisy in trying to justify something that the majority of your constituents would not agree with. If you think they would agree with it, then let's repeal the ordinance and go put it on the ballot. Because the constitutional, I mean, the Charter Review Commission rejected this. Okay? But you guys did it anyway. You're not accountable to your constituents. You just make lame excuses. So again, repeal the ordinance. It's real simple. Commissioner, I mean, Mayor Ward, you said, well, we can't do this because it's an ordinance. Yeah, it's real simple. Repeal the ordinance, just like you did last week with Commissioner Chestnut's motion on the zoning. Real simple, guys. Do the right thing. Again, deflecting and excuse-making. Housing crisis, student debt, family structure, children, rewriting history to fit your own convenient narrative. The only problem here, folks, is it's not true. It's absolute greed. Again, doubling your salaries, again, you're deflecting and excuse-making in a feeble attempt to justify doubling your salaries on top of the 9.6% automatic increase that you got under the existing ordinance. And yes, it's tied to CPI. But again, look at other bigger cities, Jacksonville, much bigger population than you guys. They have a utility. Their commissioners don't get paid what you guys want to pay yourselves. Why do you guys think you're all that important? Because you spend your time on everything else, other than addressing the real problems facing the city of Gainesville? Again, the commission is supposed to be a part-time role of public service, not a high-paying job for formal political consultants and others that otherwise would have difficulty landing a job at the proposed salary levels due to lack of corporate and real-world experience. I don't think most, most of the people that approved this would get a job at that level in the real world. Full-time job. This is the justification, oh, this is a full-time job. Well, a couple of you on the commission already have a full-time job. Are you going to quit your job at UF, Commissioner Willis? Because this is a full-time job, according to Commissioner Sacco. Again, don't, don't sit there and gaslight people. It's disrespectful. Again, repeal the ordinance, just like the zoning changes. And the hypocrisy being used to justify this fiscally irresponsible expenditure is tantamount to feeding at the trough like a bunch of pigs. I'm sorry, that's the way it is. Illustrated example, you want to double your salary, but you didn't vote to double the salary of firefighters, or police officers, your charter officers, other city workers. Stop the greed. Thank you.
Next speaker is Joe Beatty.
First of all, I want to object to the procedures you've been using. You want us to talk. We don't know what we're talking to. Procedure is that you should have a proposition, a motion on there, and we should be able to speak to it. You're going to, later, there may be a motion, and we won't get to speak to that because you'll say, you already had your chance. We have no idea what you're going to do. This whole thing is, I think, Mr. Book, I would urge you to make a motion when I finish speaking, and somebody to second it, and do real debate and inclusion of the citizens. The fact that you passed this last fall is, is wrong. It shouldn't have been done. It should have been rushed. I think it was done for the benefit of some commissioners that were coming on by an outgoing commission. I think there needs to be a motion today, and let's see where you all stand on this. You know, not, not everybody is in a position to, you know, have the experience in that to do, to lead the city as commissioners. You're only supposed to be a policymaking board. We have highly-paid charter officers, well-qualified, highly-paid. And you guys send them off in all sorts of different directions. They can't really lead using their professional expertise because you have inserted yourselves in micromanaging and deflecting. And, you know, it's about time we have this discussion. And I think that this is truly appropriate motion. I think you really need to look at it, not just at this meeting, but I think there really has to be a larger plan. You have so many empty positions. You've got highly-paid people at the top. Your proposed salary is higher than, you know, many of your employees make. And you've got employees at the bottom sitting next to empty desks, you know, doing two jobs. And you need to start looking at your salary structure and paying people for the work they're doing. And you're supposed to be policymakers. You've made this, you've commissioned, commissioned before you. And it sounds like some of these commissioners are trying to do that right now. You've made it a full-time job. You're micromanaging, you're pushing through your own personal agenda in many cases. And those of you that are really here trying to do public service are getting run over. And, you know, please, and when you put a motion on, give us a chance to talk to the motion because we're talking to the air.
Next speaker is Jen Powell.
Hello, commissioners, newly-elected commissioners, mayor. I wasn't planning on speaking today. I actually just wanted to be a presence. But when Ms. Sacco mentioned, you know, a lot of like diversity and whatnot, it kind of reminded me of, oh, I'm sorry, I'm Jen Powell, and I am the union organizer for CWA 3170. We represent all the employees with the city of Gainesville and GRU, and then not ATU and the others. But what I really wanted to speak about is, you know, we have quite a few people, and I mentioned this at the last meeting, but we have new people now, who are living at or below the poverty level, who are working for the city of Gainesville. They are people with families. They are people who have to, to have daycare. They are people who have to, you know, they're, they're working 40 hours a week. They're making 40 hours a week. Many of them are making $15 an hour. I pulled up the number, who are making less than 20. And honestly, if you've rented or tried to buy a home in Gainesville, that's not going to cut it. So we have 280 employees who are, are, are working below $20 an hour. There's only 50 rank-and-file employees at the city who are making $80,000 a year. And those people have very, very, they're very, very experienced in what they're doing. And they are running power plants, they are treating our water, they are climbing the power lines in hurricanes. And they're just barely making $80,000 a year. They are working full-time. We are short-staffed right, right now. The list that I got of CWA eligible employees is about 980. That's about 200 less than when I started a year and a half ago. We're having trouble recruiting because of low wages. So I really hope, whatever your decision is today, that you guys, when we start our bargaining next year for our new contract, I hope that I will see you there. You know, you guys will each attend a bargaining session to see, you know, if we can work something out because I believe that we are at a crisis mode with the city. We have some very, very important vacancies that we are having trouble filling. There's, you know, and that goes from what I hear a lot, you know, the low-skill level to highly skilled. We're having trouble filling vacancies. So I think it's really important to understand that not just you guys here sitting, you know, around this table have issues that need to be addressed, which require more money. And yes, it's a full-time job. I, I don't have a problem with it, you know, with a raise. But I feel like it's insulting to the CWA when like our negotiated raise was 2.5. And then next year, who knows what it will be? But I'm just worried about the state of the city if we do not address the, the salaries and benefits to keep the employees that are still here and to attract better ones. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tyler Force.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I'm just here to reiterate my previous comments. I'm certainly in a small minority of one in public comment at least. I do support this. I believe you should. And again, I'll point out, link your salary to the state formula. You're not voting on a specific number. You're voting to link it on the formula. That is decided by the state legislature, which, as we all know, has no favors to do for you. So it's not like it's written to reward you, right? So they put out that formula for a reason, for counties and cities to use it to set their salaries so that the commissioners are able to not independently set it. And it is adjusted for inflation, as I understand. So I would encourage you to simply reaffirm the vote of the previous commission and move on to other topics, like, as Ms. Powell pointed out, filling the gap in your retention crisis and in the city employees. They do need to be rewarded. Wages do need to be brought up across the board. And the same logic that, that applies here applies to those employees as well. Okay? So, thank you.
Mr. Kamau, I won't let you speak this time, but please, if you would, if you want to speak to other items, we try to keep a sign-up process.
I didn't say, I wasn't aware of that. I'm also.
Please go ahead and speak this time.
Thank you. Part of the problem is I would have come forward, but as you can see, I do have this.
I understand. And I apologize, as I did earlier this morning. We're down here in this room. We should be upstairs in the regular commission chamber. So we had some audio difficulties, and that's why we're down here. Would have been easier upstairs, but apologies.
I appreciate the time. And I appreciate every comment that was made. I am not going to speak directly to salary, but I want to speak especially with regard to the last speaker who spoke before in favor of the salary increase. He made two presumptions, both of which turned out to be false. One, he assumed you were all working till all hours of the morning, all hours of the day, 48 hours maybe, who knows? Part-time, but that's it. The second thing related to the scale. The apples and oranges between part-time employees and full-time employees were disregarded when you approved that. The data you're collecting, your fate, has all kinds of variances on the commission, some part-time, some in different direction. I'm not complaining about the amount. That's not my concern. But now I want to tell you, and the reason I'm speaking, is to a single incident that will explain what my objection is. I came on a Friday in this year for this commission to address my issue of Lake Butterfly City at 3 o'clock on a Friday afternoon. Not a single commissioner was here, not one, to cover a normal workday. But I was around talking to Jared at the desk. One commissioner did come in, fine. She said she would give me a couple of minutes. Great. She went right by me, came back out a few minutes later, ignored me entirely. Didn't even say goodbye or, I'm sorry, just left. That's your part-time commissioner, okay? The illusion that you guys work overtime is nonsense. If you can leave an office on a Friday, a normal workday, and not have a single commissioner here to respond to the public. I want to make one other quick comment with Runt, Commissioner Eastman, the coaching remark about we can't do it because of the charter. I ask all of you to look at, the coded ordinances 2.10 with regard to the relationship between commissioners and charter officers. We're dealing with six out of seven interim charter officers. Your commissioner, as this lady indicated, has wiped out the charter. It has no bearing. If you're looking to 2.10, you have not followed it for years. Thank you for your time.
So I would note that I received communication from Mr. Kamau regarding that Friday afternoon. I was on the job. I was not in the building. I was out touring GCRAS site, so.
Well, I'm saying somebody should, what commission should be enveloping it all on during working hours.
I don't disagree with you at all. Okay, so public comment on this item is closed. Any commissioners want to speak on?
I'm just going to wait to see if any might, colleagues, but otherwise I'll.
Mr. Book, go ahead.
Okay, so, so a few things, some, some good comments from the public and, and around from you all as a colleague. So I appreciate that very much. So there's a couple of things. I know, we talked, Mr. Mayor, about the fact that we voted proceeding as a commission in ordinance, which, which you were, you were absolutely correct. That's an ordinance aspect of the way that we determine our raises. And so the previous commission voted on something. We just rescinded something on January 5th that was very much like that very thing. Change in ordinance related to single-family zoning, single-family housing. And we basically restored some balance, at least started the process on neighborhoods. And that was also voted on just a month ago. So I see this as no different. I see this as a decision by a newly-elected body, three of us, my colleague, you know, Brian, Commissioner Eastman, and Casey, Commissioner Willis, and I, all came in knowing exactly what our salary would be. We knew it. You know, when November 8th at midnight hit, or November 9th, rather, at maybe 12:01 a.m., we knew what we were getting into. So I feel like that's a pretty important consideration, given that we knew what the service would be. And at least we probably knew some expectations. You know, as, as, as a new person, I'm wrestling with the hours and the time and scheduling. Commissioner Chestnut and I had, had a laugh at the retreat where she said, so is it the amount of hours that you thought? And I would say, well, maybe not quite, right? So I understand that. But the charter does lay out for us in general the fact that as elected officials, vision and policy, part-time versus full-time is not something I'll get into. I think probably everybody gives the time, if they're at this table, that they feel is critical to, to serve the community. And it's going to be a lot. I think that's actually irrelevant to the salary discussion. So the, the two or three other things, and then I'll, I'll close with a motion, and we'll see where it goes, is, so looking at the salary schedule, one of the backups, was some really terrific 2019 research. I want to be transparent there. 2019, we do not believe, according to the Policy Oversight Coordinator, that that research probably has changed much because of specifically the pandemic. There has probably not been much change to these, these factors. Very few cities across the state, very few of those elected officials, make more money than we do. Very few. Looking at them and highlighting them, most of them are in South Florida, North Miami, Tammerack, Lauderdale, Sunrise, Fort Lauderdale, Central Florida, and Hillsborough County, St. Petersburg, Orlando, and Tampa. These are cities that probably have very complex governments. Now, I don't suspect, I'm, I'm an expert on whether we are doing more or less. But I would suspect across this data, there's probably not that great of a variance in our responsibilities versus some of these very, very complex cities. Those are the only cities that had salaries more than us. And the median salary is below us by almost $10,000. So the median salary in 2019 is about $29,000 across the state, according to this research. And what we have just provided in December was a vote to basically provide this 9-point-something percent raise and get the, the city commissioners, us is at $37,000. percent raise and get the city commissioners, us is at 37,000 something. And Mr. Mayor, yours is expected to be a little bit higher than that. Those figures are above the median and the average for the entire state of Florida, and many of these cities are larger than us. So I will say that. We did hear from a couple of citizens about what I call collateral impacts. This is important. Collateral impacts is the 2,000-plus employees that we will be bargaining with over the next three to four years. One of them, I think, I believe right now, one has their wages and salary open on the table this year, and I don't expect any of those potential groups to come and say, you know what, I need this percentage, and it's 90%. I do expect that we should pay commensurate salary and benefits to value our staff, and that becomes a really difficult conversation when we feel that we may be amongst the most well-paid amongst that group, right? We may do hard work and complex work, but frontline work is hard work and complex work, and I'm not making that as a speech. That's not designed to try and, you know, make something that's a public eight-second soundbite. It's not that. What I think is, we will hear about this as we move through our IAFF and our CWA and our PBA and our FOP and our MAPs, when they come up in these things, and our salaries that we potentially vote on here, if we vote on them, will come up and we'll be hearing that about them as the way that other employees feel about their salaries and benefits. So that's critical. Our budget process starts next month, and we're going to be making decisions that are extremely difficult. This is the last point, extremely. And we just saw some great transformational projects that are fortunately funded in another way this morning. But many of the projects that we're going to be voting on and the budget that the manager's going to be bringing to us on a one-year cycle, because it's so difficult, we're in such a difficult budget situation right now at the city, we're only going to basically hope to codify one budget fiscal year. And we'll be sitting on potentially a very large raise, and it's a very difficult thing. It's a very difficult thing to stomach. So I'll just lastly mention again, timing is critical, and this is very, very bad timing. And, you know, looking, I know that I think you might maybe made some mention of that in the December conversations. I don't want to point out somebody by name and then feel awkward about that, but timing is important, budget is important, and certainly, community insight and input is important. I think all three of those weigh in as, and I think that this October 1 raise is not a good thing. So with that, unless someone wants to comment, I'm happy to make a motion and see what happens. Nothing from the gallery over there either. I move on the mention related to salaries to delete aspects of the city ordinance which go into effect October of this year and forward, and also which do tie salaries to some different data, as Commissioner Willis respected. This leaves intact a nine-plus, a 9% plus salary that just went into impact, that just went into effect in December of 2022. I'll leave the motion at that.
So essentially, the motion is to repeal the, to walk back the statute, the ordinance to the previous formula?
No, because we just got a raise in December, and it leaves that intact.
And that was part of the previous formula, though. So.
It's exactly what I just indicated.
Okay. There's a second.
I need a point of clarity. I'm sorry. Please say again. So you're walking back the ordinance not to include the 9% raise?
Yes, ma'am, that's accurate.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Proton.
Absolutely. Second.
So, again, the 9% raise, I don't want to hazard what that figure is, was part of the formula that existed prior to the change last fall. I do want to take a moment to point out a couple of things that have been not mentioned. Those South Florida cities that you mentioned, they don't offer the same service as the city of Gainesville does. I think if you will take a look at the breadth of services the city of Gainesville offers, the city of Tampa, for instance, does not offer the same list of services the city of Gainesville does, as expected, ma'am. The city of Tallahassee is similar to the city of Gainesville, but I think that their list is also a little short. Many cities that share orders with other similar cities also share services. So they don't do everything that the city of Gainesville does. Also important to note that there are folks right across the street who make more money than, for very similar jobs, that offer significantly fewer services. Nobody has any questions about their pay. I haven't heard a single person go to a county commission meeting and say, y'all should cut your salaries or use a different formula. I think it's important to keep that in mind. So any other commissioners have comments on this?
I just want clarification again. So are you leaving the ordinance passed in December in place? Is that, that's one?
Yes, ma'am.
You're leaving that ordinance, but then two, you want to rescind the cost of living increase?
No, the provision that October 1 of 2023 takes our salary up to that that's equivalent to, like the mayor said, essentially across the street.
Okay, I'm not clear.
So your motion is to remove the additional salary, not the, so the 8% increase would have happened whether any motions were made, then the ordinances were changed last fall at all. But you are asking to change, I don't want to put words in it, but what I understand is that your motion is to change the ordinances that were passed last fall.
Yeah, and what's really important is that, so that I make sure that that motion is clear, is whatever we have to do in relation to that to make sure that October 1 of 2023 does not result in a 90% increase in salary, that would be the provision of the ordinance that would be repealed or rescinded.
So essentially, the motion on the floor is to rescind the ordinance that was passed by the commission last fall and to go back to the ordinance that bases the commission's salary on CPI.
City ordinance, city ordinance?
Correct.
Okay, that's what needs to be said.
Ms. Martinez, please.
Well, you voted against it, now you're for it.
Ms. Martinez, you have an opportunity, please.
You're advocating for it.
Okay, Ms. Martinez, this is the last one. Next time, I will put this in recess and ask her to please stop the outbursts.
I'll probably only have two or three more mea culpa's as it relates to, you know, process and experience. So I understand what I want done, but without the city clerk kind of explaining the mechanism for that particular procedure, I probably wouldn't have gotten it quite as it should be.
She made it very clear.
So thanks for that.
Well, so let me ask this. By recension, this is where it gets really complicated. Can't really rescind a vote because the people who voted for it are not here to ask for that recension. What we can do is.
There's only one here that voted for it.
Correct. So, and I'm not, the cleaner path is to do a different ordinance that underlines the strike-throughs and the strike-throughs that underline, as we did, as the discussion was on the exclusionary zoning conversation. That's by far the cleaner path, should we do that direction.
Well, I would say probably the best way to determine a clear path is I look at the city attorney and say, what is the clearest path to the intent of what I just formulated as a motion?
Mr. Attorney, do you have a recommendation?
Mr. Mayor, I can explain as much as you want. I don't want to overstep here. I'm not certain that there's a common understanding of how your salaries are currently formulated and the effect of ordinance, I think it was 2022-758, that was passed last, it was last November, December. So to the extent you want me to delve into that, let me know.
So let me just say, there's a reason we have a policy process. It helps us crystallize ideas into actionable items, instead of trying to figure out what the motion actually ought to be on the dais or at the table. And frankly, we find ourselves in a position where folks who may or may not support the motion are trying to help crystallize what the motion ought to be. That's not a good place for us to be as a body. I would suggest that, and I certainly mean this advice as well, that going forward, if we want to get something done, we want to make a change, we go through the policy process so that we can crystallize what the recommendation is specifically to bring forward. And again, that applies to me as much as does anybody else.
I think in a perfect world, that's probably a good thing. We didn't do that two weeks ago, on January 5th, where we had a very, very complex issue with single-family zoning, and right there at the table, we had to kind of discuss with the city attorney, what is the clear path? And we did exactly that to make sure that that motion had the right intent behind it and the right action. So I think this has actually gone through appropriately because we discussed it, agenda review, and so I think this is actually the place.
So I would suggest that you go ahead and make a very specific motion and then.
Yeah, I feel like I did that.
Okay, I think, is everybody clear on the motion? Because I'm not.
I mean, I'll say it one more time and make sure that, you know, everybody feels like there is, because I certainly don't want someone voting on something that they would, and they vote either for or against something merely because we don't know what it is. That would be terrible policy in action.
I think I know what you're trying to achieve, but the motion was not clear to me.
Yeah, I understand, that's fair, Mr. Mayor. So the motion is to leave intact the raise that was just awarded to the city commission based on that December vote by the commission, and that's 9% plus. Those salaries remain intact, that's 2,000-something for the commission, 3,000-something for the mayor, and that anything that relates to October 1, 2023, ordinance or codified that then changes our salary by 90% is deleted or rescinded. That's the motion.
Repeal. So. Right, so it stays with CPI, which I don't think was part of the motion last fall. That existed for a long period of time, that attacking salaries to CPI. The change was to attach commission and their salaries to the state formula. Repeal it. Mr. Attorney, if the motion hasn't existed, how does that function legally?
I don't know, Mr. Mayor. It doesn't give us direction as to whether to draft an ordinance or not. What you currently have is your charter says that your salaries are to be set by ordinance. The ordinance that's in place is Section 2-66, which sets a salary back in 2000 and says that except as provided in subsection C, annual salary shall be adjusted by the August 2000 to August 2001 percent change in the Bureau of Labor Statistics Consumer Price Index for all urban consumers, Southern Region, and it shall be adjusted each year thereafter. In 2002, there was a vote of the commission to actually have a reduction and then to resume the annual review based upon CPI, CPIU. And Section C has a caveat that if employees in the city's professional plan do not receive a general increase in any particular fiscal year, then the salaries of the mayor and the city commissioners shall not be increased that year. So the CPIU-based adjustment wouldn't happen in any year where the city's professional plan doesn't receive a general increase. At the end of last year, there was a motion made to change that ordinance and put a new ordinance in that would calculate a salary for the city commission that was related to the population of the city and based on the formula that the statutes provide for calculation of a population-based salary for county commissioners to try to use the same formulation. That formulation would result in an increase in salary for our commissioners and mayor. That motion provided that the, based upon the statutory scheme that was being applied by the commission to the commission salaries, and it was all put into your ordinance, that that calculation would be done on a fiscal year basis, you know, starting October 1st, and to make a salary that's effective in the first full pay period of the following year. So there's a number of things that I think have been casually discussed that may not be actual. First of all, your salary is not based by charter, it's based by ordinance. Any raise that you would get this year would be based upon the ordinance that's been in effect for, since 2000 or so, with a couple of years that it was changed, but the CPIU-based increases in years when professional employees received a general increase. And the change made at the end of last year, ordinance 2000, ordinance 2022-758 would provide for a new formula being used, applied in October of '23 to take effect in salaries in January of '24. All that being said, and again, I apologize if it's too much, but just to try to get a level playing field, I sense, and this is where I'm really overstepping, that the intent of the movement is to pass an ordinance that would, or give direction for an ordinance that would essentially delete the ordinance 2022-758 and leave the old scheme in place. I'm not sure if that's, I'm not sure if that's what the motion was or not. Again, I've overstepped probably, but if you want more information, ask me.
It's a good thing you're sitting at the table. I would say.
I think the difference here, Commissioner Book, in what you are formulating and what was formulated January 5th regarding exclusionary zoning, is that the exclusionary zoning motion was very clear. It was to repeal, rescind, and that's how it was stated on the agenda. So to me, the Consumer Price Index, that's automatic. I mean, that's going to go no matter what. So you don't really, you don't really need to address that. If it's repeal or rescind, that's where you just need to be very succinct and state what you want to do.
That's good direction. I repeal the former motion. And I have a new motion, so I withdraw that motion. Thank you. I certainly understand Robert's Rules of Orders better than I understand I make the clear motion in that regard. So that's good. So I withdraw the previous motion. Thank you for the second on that, Mayor Proton, on the preceding.
I agree with you on drawing the second as well.
Yes. The new motion is to repeal the ordinance that was just passed, as you were just describing, and leave intact the aspects of the ordinance before that were already there going back to the early 2000s. I do, intent-wise, the salary increase that was just awarded remains.
First of all, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, with the motion at the last meeting, it wasn't just to repeal those three ordinances from October. It was direction for us to draft ordinances that would return the code to the way it was before, because we don't really have a situation where we could just repeal that and have what was there before. That's why we're going through this process, which is going to take a few months to run those ordinances through the plan board. This is a competent change, obviously. But so it's, again, I suspect this motion is intended to be to direct us to draft an ordinance that would put Section, what was it, 2?
2-66.
I just lost my place. 2-66, the way it was prior to the last ordinance.
Mr. Chestnut.
I'd just like to say, so if Commissioner Book could repeat his motion and add in the ordinance number in his motion, and then add in direct staff, staff, then you would have it very clear.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Turn towards the.
Yeah, then you would have it very clear.
The motion is to delete, repeal, rescind the preceding ordinance. The motion is to delete, repeal, rescind the preceding ordinance on that vote related to 2022-758, with some subsections, one of them be E, and allow, and then allow the existing salary raises that were in December to remain. The last part of that motion is to direct city staff through the charter of the city attorney to do that, and draft that ordinance as just discussed.
Senator, your second stays intact. All right, is there any more discussion from commissioners? Mr. Williams.
We're on a learning curve, I think every city commission, whether it's three years or four years. And I know that I, and I misquoted that, I thought it was a charter, because I read the charter, it said, it was set by ordinance, and then I got off into ordinance land. It's easy to make a mistake. I'm still working full-time at my full-time job. There's a plan for how that will be ended, and then step down and step down to being a full-time commissioner. I think this is a perfect example of part-time commissioners, even early, not yet performing at full-time performance. But this, I want to make sure that we don't leave out some discussion about this even before, this is a preliminary kind of motion, to have staff bring us back in ordinance. Bureau of Labor Statistics in 2020, they said the top seven most common jobs in the United States, retail salesperson, fast food encounter workers, cashiers, registered nurses, customer service representative, laborers of freight stock materials, office clerks general. Three of them have higher mean wages than the current city's commission salary as set, gee, now what is current? Three of those categories are literally higher. I like to make sure that those kinds of things are known. Administrative assistant to the University of Florida makes just about the same amount as our current salary for commission. When we talk about half-time versus full-time, I really want it to be known that telling someone to work a half-time job, anyone who has had multiple jobs at once knows how difficult it is, because it is not merely 20 here and 20 there, and it lines up easily. It's not like you're a contract worker at home, where you just literally switch from 20 hours on this contract, and I, whatever, go onto Zoom meeting for the next 20 hours of the week, 4:00 in the morning, 4:00 in the afternoon. It's travel across the city. It is working two jobs, as I am now, as Commissioner Book is now. It is adding on a 20-hour of part-time to a full-time, of course, we know, is very difficult. Even adding on to a part-time, if you say city commission is a part-time job, well, that would suggest most human beings have to have a full-time job in their life to survive. Two half-time jobs are very difficult. We're lucky in this position that even if this is a part-time job, it provides full-time benefits in the form of health insurance. Vacation's a little different, we have some time, but there's some weeks built in that we sort of have off. But for most people, two part-time jobs equals zero benefits, and leaves them at the mercy of going to healthcare exchanges online and hoping they get a subsidy to pay for their health insurance. We're not in that situation, I'm very grateful. I know that when I looked at running for office, I was absolutely going to have to quit my full-time job. My job would not allow for me to just step into it part-time, because there are regulatory requirements for the job that I'm currently in, and it was necessitating that I take a half-time job, I lose, depending on how I decide to step into that half-time job, half the cash-out vacation, half the lose weeks and weeks, months of accrued vacation, leave, give up months of accrued sick time that could be used later in life, God forbid I get cancer or have some sort of a hospitalization. As well as at my stage of the game, 40, as Commissioner Sacco mentioned about where it fits into your career, this is a huge step and a huge jump for someone who's in the middle of their career. Perhaps at the very beginning of your career, if you're 25, 26, 27, you haven't really started, you have a lot of life to go into, jump into the careers in the middle, it is very difficult. Of the list of job types I mentioned, I know that some people who ran for office this last cycle were retail sales and fast food, the cashiers, I don't know of registered nurses currently on the city commission, customer service representatives, labors and freight stock material movers, office clerks, perhaps I am an office clerk in essence. But when I look at those types of jobs, the comparison to, we are perhaps well-represented in the professional managerial class, perhaps, but I do not think we are well-represented in the full diversity of what people do to put food on the table and a roof over their heads. And I keep on being brought back to the idea that, two things. One, families, it takes a lot more money for someone my exact same age who has a child or a spouse, a couple of children. I don't even have a dog, so I don't, I'm not even spending on that. Other people have a lot more expenditures. But the second is that, across the board, political scientists talk about the pay of public officials as an anti-corruption mechanism, because, and we have mentioned some illustrious cities who have literal corruption problems, literal corruption problems of their elected officials, not the mere complaints we sometimes hear in Gainesville from our neighbors. But the ability to have a good pay for the good work you do helps shield public officials and public employees, our community builders, from pressures that they do things for some sort of payoff or even community status that may give them payoff in the end, later. It lets them know, me know, this is my job, and particularly if it pays full-time, I'm going to give it full-time, so that someone is there at 3 o'clock when Mr. Campbellowitz comes in and asks with a question, and also so that every single email that comes to me, I answer. I will say, in 1983 to 1986, there was no email. There may have been notes written by secretaries, put down on administrative desks, but I will tell you, as a person who manages three or four email accounts, a personal and two work ones, there's a lot more work than perhaps even people who are on the commission in the 80s or 90s experienced at this job. I'll leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Yeah, so before we vote, I want to add one thing. In the coming months, we are going to have discussions about charter officers, and that is going to necessitate that we have discussions well up, about salaries well into the hundreds of thousands of dollars. I hope that we will consider, and the community will consider, each position on its own merits, whether we're talking about charter officers, at executive level salaries, or entry-level folks in our organization. We need each position to be paid and compensated according to its own merits. And I think that's incredibly important as we talk about our bargaining minutes. When we conflate one position with another and trying to bring salaries to a market similarity, I think that's important, and it is different than saying, we're not going to pay everybody the same, we're not. That's not what this is about, that's not, that's not just or fair. We absolutely need, and I think you, those of you who are involved in the labor movement, know that I believe this, that we need to compensate people for, in a fair and just fashion, and I think you know that you count on my votes to consistently do that. This is not the same as that. And conflating it, I don't think serves a good purpose. With that, any more commissioners?
I have one thing I wanted to add. Because I did not mention, it's on my notes, of course, 2.5%, that's not enough of a raise for our CWA workers. I'm a CWA member through the University of Florida, of course, 2.5% is not enough. I feel you, I hear you, I want to, I want to make sure that our community builders know that people on the commission know that 2.5% literally not enough to even keep up this year, perhaps in the past, this year, not enough to keep up. I forgot to do one of my votes, I wanted to make sure I mentioned that.
Any other commissioners? All right, the motion on the floor is, in substance, to repeal the salary raise that went into ordinance last fall, and to direct staff to bring back ordinances for us to consider that we do that. Is that accurate, Commissioner Book?
Yeah, and it's important to understand that that does leave intact, just for clarity, the fact that we did, in fact, just get a raise.
Yes. So, is that clear to all the commissioners, what we're talking about? Keep in mind, too, that means we're going to, if this passes, there'll be two more meetings where we'll talk about this, because we'll have to pass those ordinances on two re, that ordinance on two re. All in favor of that process? Say it.
Hi.
Hi.
All votes.
No.
So, Commissioner Ward, you voted against something, and now you're voting for it? Come on, it's ridiculous.
Mr. Scott, you already had your moments to speak on this, thank you. The motion fails.
You didn't know the specific proposition?
Yes.
Our next document is 2023-07. An ordinance revising...
Hold on a minute, Ms. Martinez, you had your opportunity to...
No, I didn't hear, I didn't hear the vote.
Ms. Martinez, I'm, I voted against the motion. That's what you wanted to hear, so there you go.
No, I wanted to know who I voted, I don't really care about you.
Ms. Martinez, I voted against it, it failed five, it failed two to five.
And the other one was?
What point of the vote?
So, Commissioner Book, and I believe Commissioner Duncan Walker voted in the affirmative, the rest of us voted against.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Now, Ms. Martinez, and anyone else, we do out first, I'm going to adjourn the meeting, and we will, we will proceed with the orderly conduct of the meeting.
Can you explain your inconsistent vote, Commissioner Ward?
Mr. Scott, I'll be happy to talk to you privately. You're interfering with the orderly conduct of the meeting.
Ordinance number 2023-07, an ordinance revising civil citation penalties and code enforcement fines and liens. An ordinance of the City of Gainesville, Florida, amending Section 2-339, applicable code and ordinances to revise civil citation penalties for violations of certain ordinances, amending Section 2-381, administrative fines and liens to authorize a reduction of assessed costs in code enforcement cases, amending Section 12.
Yes, you did.
I apologize. I keep a just kidding in my pocket for that reason. Bill 2022-637, Dallingway Cluster Subdivision Design Plaid, with the recommendation of commission approval position, SUB 22-000012, for a 61-lot residential platted infill cluster
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and commissioners. My name is Dan Zhu, a planner with Sustainable Development. I'm presenting SUB 22-000012, Dallingway Design Plaid. Here is a brief timeline. The first staff meeting was in March, the neighborhood workshop was in May, the development review board meeting was in October. Here is the location of the subject property. It's located at 5912 Northwest 34th Street, with a size of 20 acres. Nearby the side, we have San Filasco Park, Devil's Mill Hopper, and Super Walmart. The applicant is requesting for 61-lot residential platted infill cluster subdivision. The subject property is zoned RSF2 with future land use of single-family. RSF2 represent for single-family residential. Now let's take a look at the design plan. Here is the access to the site, which is from Northwest 37th Street. There is an emergency access from Northwest 34th Street. Here is the open space. On this slide, we have more details about the cluster subdivision. First and foremost, this is an infill cluster subdivision containing only single-family detached dwelling units. Secondly, there is no increase in density, according to the existing zoning, which allows 4.6 dwelling unit per acre. That is equals to 92 dwelling units for the subject property. The applicant is asking for 61 dwelling units. In addition, the lot size and lot width reduction applies to all 61 lot. There is no reduction to the lot depth. Let's put on a list about the open space. According to the Land Development Code, 1.27 acres would be required for this project. The applicant is proposing 1.34 acres. Finally, let's take a look at the site photo. This is the existing access from Northwest 37th Street. Both the development review board and the planning staff are recommending approval to this project. The applicant's agent is here without this afternoon and would be happy to share with you more details about this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Go on up, Mr. Swager.
Good evening, or afternoon, I'm not sure what time it is right now.
It's hard to tell on the face of the...
Happy New Year, let's go with that. Good to see you all, I'm Clay Swager with EDA Consultants. I'd like to give you a brief presentation, just to add to what Ms. Zhu provided you. This is a design plat for a subdivision that's being proposed in Gainesville. Design plat has certain criteria to be met for subdivisions. We have to demonstrate how we meet all the comprehensive plan policies and the zoning densities and restrictions and so forth. So this application is here before you, for your consideration. Just quickly and in summary, a cluster subdivision, there are two types. There's an environmental cluster subdivision and infill cluster subdivision. In this case, this is really the good, great example of an infill subdivision. There's residential projects all in the area, and so this is just an opportunity to bring a residential infill project. And a cluster subdivision allows for better utilization of land and more efficient use through certain design strategies that would be better and above and beyond what the typical subdivision regulations would have in your zoning districts. Examples I'll go through in just a minute, as far as provision of open space and bike pad corridors. It allows flexibility in design to allow housing types that are a little bit unique to this area and help to meet the unfulfilled housing needs that we're all aware of. As Dan indicated, there are four city, county, and regional parks within two miles of here. So this is really a great opportunity for more residential housing in Northwest Gainesville. Just quick math on that with San Filasco Park, Devil's Mill Hopper, Hasom Creek, and Fort Creeks Preserve, those are all within two miles, which to some would be certainly within walking distance or biking distance. So to have more residents in this area, they'll be very well-served, not just by commercial and commerce, but these residential, I'm sorry, these recreational areas. This property is 20 acres in size, it's in the mile-run area up of 37th Street, about 20 acres in size. As you can see on this aerial, there are a couple of old home sites, but predominantly the use of land is planted pines, so they've been, they've been growing pine trees and harvesting them for quite some time. So about 20 years ago, it was just an open field, just to give you the characteristics of the land. This is your land use map in the comprehensive plan. All the areas in yellow are single-family, which allows eight units per acre, and the areas to the west allow 12 units per acre. And this is your zoning map, the lime green areas to the north and to the west are planned developments for those properties, and then RSF2 is on this site and to the south, which allows 4.6 units per acre. So we're proposing 61 units, all single-family detached platted units. That is about two-thirds of the zoning density, about one-third of the land use density. So it's not, it's not packed in, it's not the highest density, it's, we feel it's compatible with the area, but it does allow more residential units than what you'd be able to do with just the traditional zoning. So I think it strikes a really nice balance, and I'll get to the layout in just a moment. Again, 61 units, single-family detached, these would be, obviously, homeownership, platted sold lots and homes. We will incorporate some traditional neighborhood design principles in this area. A majority of the lots will have rear-loaded garages off of alleys, so that allows the homes to come closer to the street, wider sidewalks, you don't have driveways every 20 feet. So it's a little more pedestrian-friendly, have an older neighborhood feel, which I think is part of what makes it unique, and a cluster subdivision allows that kind of design flexibility on the setbacks. This is the design plat, I added some colors to it. I added some colors to it just to highlight a few of the attributes. The areas in green include landscape stormwater areas, landscape buffers. There's actually a large area in the southeast corner of the property. That's where a majority of the nice heritage trees are located that aren't the planted pines that you seek throughout the site. That'll all be preserved and put into a park status for the neighborhood and will be open to the public. The area in yellow, or the lots in yellow, are the ones that will have the homes brought up to the street and have the alleys in the rear for the garage access. And there's a dash line along the south property line, which is the developers proposing a paved, hard-surface bike and ped path that connects east and west. In the very southeast corner of the property, there's a small connection of about 10 or 15 feet wide. It's not enough for a road, but it is enough for a bike, ped connection and emergency access for emergency vehicles, fire trucks, ambulances, et cetera. So we will be able to link several neighborhoods. As you all know, Northwood Oaks is a huge development. It goes all the way to 34th Street, a few miles east, and then Mile Run. So we're going to provide a nice linkage there through this project. These are just a couple of images I took from other projects. In the top left, it's really what you'd see in that main street that runs through the property. You'd have parallel parking with landscape by lanes to sort of calm the traffic, allow for some parking. And then the homes are brought a little bit closer to the street. And you don't have all of the front-loaded garages. And then in the bottom right, it's just a concept of what you'd see for rear-loaded garages and alleys. And so the project, in our opinion, is compatible with the area as far as the density. We're not hitting the maximum amount of density here. It's sensitive to the surrounding areas. It does provide landscape buffers and fencing along the north property line, which was part of the discussion at our neighborhood meeting. They were interested in that and the developer agreed to add the fence along with some landscape areas. And also the homes, there are a handful of homes that actually abut, physically abut, the lots of other subdivisions. All of those lots meet the minimum lot requirements in the zoning, so there's no reductions requested on those. It's really only ones that are behind larger landscape areas or fences to help just assure the compatibility and also to meet the cluster subdivision criteria. So there are a lot of criteria that we've gone through and your professional staff has indicated that they believe that we're consistent with all of those requirements. I can go through any of those in any detail that the commission might see fit. This has gone to your development review board that unanimously recommended approval along with your staff. We do believe that we've met all of your requirements. And approval of this design plat will allow us to move forward with construction plans and ultimately bring a final plat back to you all and hopefully bring another residential development into the city in relatively short order. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions he might have.
Any questions for the Commissioner? Commissioner Chestnut?
I forgot the process. I was going to make a motion.
Yeah, there are a little bit of questions for Commissioner Eastman.
Yeah, Mr. Swager. So one of the things that's a big part of our comprehensive plan is connectivity, ensuring that within these neighborhoods, people have multiple ways to not just dump out into one arterial, which I see you're connected to 37th and you connect to 53rd. But right near there, if we go back to the map, you can see where there's the potential for connectivity. I understand there were some heritage trees and parkland there, so there could be some trade-offs there. But the potential of connecting to 34th, which then connects to 121, which should kind of alleviate some of the traffic congestion that could be off the area. Is there a reason why that connection wasn't made?
Well, Mr. Mayor, the reason the full vehicular connection was not made is because there's not enough room. We only have a very small, it's probably less than the width of this room, connection to 34th Street right-of-way. It's enough for emergency vehicles and a stabilized road and the eight-foot bike and ped path, but it's not enough for a typical 50-foot city right-of-way. We are putting in an easement through that area, so if conditions change in the future, that could change. I will say also that that's the nicest part of the property as far as heritage trees being located. And, you know, putting a road through there would be tough. It would impact those trees pretty significantly. And I would also add that a live church that's located to the south, we are providing a stubout to their property. And really, they only utilize, I would say, maybe 25% of that site. So it's not a reasonable thing in the future that they will do some sort of either expansion or redevelopment, at which point they've got several hundred feet of frontage on 34th Street. And if we're stubbing down to the south, the city would require them to stub out because there's geometry to do it. So I think in the future, you know, this is not going to preclude any of those opportunities.
And then another thing, it looks like the majority of these are, it's small, but if I recall, it was .14 acres.
Yes.
So if I recall right, residential single-family two has a minimum lot size of 7,500, correct?
That's correct.
So, sorry, you mentioned that this was an infill cluster, an infill, your cluster development. So, but can you explain how you're able to get below those minimum lot size requirements that would traditionally be for RSF2?
Sure, yeah. So there are some lots that do meet the minimum size requirements and there are, but there are a majority that are less. They're somewhere between 6,000 square feet and 7,500 square feet. So any, the way the cluster subdivision works is if you propose lots smaller than the normal size, you have to compensate by providing open space that, in park areas and so forth, that wouldn't normally be required. So I would argue that this is a better product. You're going to get more lots, but also even though the lots are a little smaller, it's providing more open space that can be usable to the public than otherwise would be required by the city. Case in point, the bike, ped trail, that's really a result of the cluster open space requirement.
And, I mean, these look like very nice homes. Are you worried with a smaller lot size that there may be less demand for those smaller lots as a result of bringing it smaller? Or is it from what you have seen or from what you're-
So our client is one of the developers of the Longleaf subdivision. And they've got a nice variety of homes. It's down, it's in the county. It's down off Barter Road, but they've got townhomes, attached units, larger lots. They've got a lot of these rear-loaded alleys. I think there's a lot of popularity now with smaller lots. Land is very expensive. It costs a lot to build homes and everyone's trying to make them at least as affordable as possible. So honestly, the way our city's zoning code is set for single-family, it really requires fairly large lots that are not really what is in the market as far as desirability. So I think 6,000 square foot lots is totally fine. I mean, that seems to be what's very popular and allows plenty of room for the homes to be built, the detached units.
Just to reiterate, you're saying that lots of people want 6,000 square foot lots, but our code mandates higher minimum square foot, minimum lot size requirements, more than so than what people are, they're seeing in the markets being, wanting to buy.
I agree with that, but I will also say the city does have the cluster ordinance, which allows for some design flexibility and coming up with something a little more creative. And I think the last three subdivisions, our company has done, the city, we've done a cluster subdivision because you've got different tools in the toolbox to come up with something a little better. But yeah, the standard zoning for single-family could use some work, in my humble opinion.
I totally agree with you. It's just this came up at the last meeting, so I just wanted to make that from someone who is not a guy. So I'm going to make the motion to approve.
Quick question. The bike and ped access on 34th, is that all engineered yet? Will that be at street level? Is it a curb? Is there bollards to prevent, you know, most vehicle, other vehicles besides emergency vehicles? And my concern is even, sometimes even bollards are designed poorly for bike, ped, people in tricycle, recumbent bicycles. So I just have a little question about exactly the engineering of that connection to 34th.
Sure. So at this, this is the design plat stage. We don't have full engineering, but there is a cross-section. It'll be a minimum of eight foot wide paved surface. It'll coincide with the emergency vehicle access. Typically, the city will require a gate with just enough width for bike and ped to get through and emergency vehicles have got the code or the key. That would be an exact design consideration that the city decides at construction plans. But that, it'll definitely be access limited in one form or fashion. I imagine it's either going to be, it's probably going to be a gate. We've got some staff here that may be able to opine, but that would be something we would hash out exactly at the construction stage.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, this will return again for the board's approval at the construction stage.
Right, that's an important thing to remember this is just for plating before it actually moves forward when we move to see it again. Commissioner Booth?
Actually, the same questions that just came up from Commissioner Eastman and Commissioner Booth were good. It's related to basically connectivity and the manner in which you get there. So I think those are good. And other than the slightly less density, this project seems to be dynamite.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners who are in the public? All right, anyone from the public? I'm sorry, did you conclude, Mr. Swager?
Yes, thank you very much.
Anyone from the public wish to speak on this before we move to a motion? Okay, Commissioner Chestnut, you have the right to have a motion.
Move the City Commissioner Booth petition, SUB22-00012, for a 61-lot residential platted infill cluster subdivision.
Seconded.
Let's go move to seconded that we unfold with this item. Any other discussion with the commission? All in favor? Aye. Aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. And we're going to take five. We'll come back at 3:05. 3:05. We've got at least one more item and then the next one. 3:05, we've got at least one more item, and then the next.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, let's go back to order. And now, clerk.
Our next item is officially 2023-07, An Ordinance Revising Civil Citation Penalties and Code Enforcement Fines and Leans. An Ordinance, Subcity of Gainesville, Florida, Amending Section 2-339, Applicable Codes and Ordinances to Revise Civil Citation Penalties for Violations of Certain Ordinances. Amending Section 2-38.1, Administrative Fines and Leans to Authorize Reduction of Assess Costs in Code Enforcement Cases. Amending Section 13-17, Adoption of the International Property Maintenance Code to Require the Removal or Remediation of Hazardous Trees. Amending Section 30-8.44, Violations, Enforcement, and Penalties to Relieve Procedures for Landscape and Treatment Management Provisions That Are Being Recodified in Section 13-17, Providing a Severability Clause, or Rehealing Clause, and an Immediate Effective Date.
Next, mayor clerk.
Mayor members of the commission.
Very patient with the way it was this afternoon.
Thank you. Pete Backhouse, Code Enforcement Manager. Most of this is cleanup language because of ordinance changes that have taken in the past several years, taken place in the past several years to get the numbers in 2-339 to align with what the ordinance states, so that we can enforce them. That's where the cleanup language has happened there. In the Chapter 13 for the International Property Maintenance Code, there's very little language in that code itself dealing with trees, hazardous and dead trees. So we're bringing back the language we previously had in Chapter 13 and incorporating it back in because it's much more explicit on what needs to be done when a dead tree is on a property or there are limbs down on the property. And in moving that there, we're taking it out of Chapter 30 because with where it's placed at 30, that deals with more site plant issues rather than property maintenance. And the third item that shows up for consideration is an addition to the language under 2388 for the special magistrate to be able to consider cost leans for reduction rescissions. Currently, he can only consider the fines that are levied as part of the leans. The cost leans that are instituted, he cannot reduce, and we run into a couple of situations where reduction of those could have enhanced getting properties approved by people who buy them.
Other questions from the commission? All right, any questions for the public about this? Any comment? Okay, back to the commission, their question. Second. All right, so we have a motion in a second to adopt those ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
And both? Oh, I'm sorry.
Commissioner Sacco?
Aye.
Commissioner Willis?
Aye.
Commissioner Book?
Aye.
Commissioner Easman? His absent, Commissioner Chestnut?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan Walker?
Aye.
And Mayor Ward?
All right. It passes unanimously. Okay, next up, it's commission comment. Any want to check in?
Colleagues, I want to circle back to something that has been on my mind since we entered into the conversation. We've had a long day already, and really, it's not, you don't feel need to belabor the point, so I'll just come right out with it. I want to hire the city manager. I want her permanent. And I'm going to tell you why, okay? First of all, I believe in the process. I signed up for the process. From the beginning, my first day, I've been very process-oriented. What has happened with me is I have had nights where I have lost sleep thinking about the situation that Ms. Curry came into, that she accepted, that she stuck with, and that she is in the process of correcting. That's the biggest thing for me. So we're talking about a willingness to do the job and then a capacity to do the job. We can talk about her ratings and everything, the way that they were blowing and all of that. I know she's a competitive person, so she probably smiled when she saw a lot of those things. But it's not lost on me what is required to do this job and how effectively, with a spirit of excellence, she has been able to do it, leading through some very serious challenges and organizational change. She has been able to confront not just challenge, but also opposition. She made some choices from the very beginning that weren't very popular with a lot of folks. Yet she knew that those were things that needed to happen in order to move the city forward. There is a spirit of professionalism. There is a spirit of, or an ability to connect with the people that work with her. There's a spirit of ingenuity that I deeply respect. I can't speak for anyone around this table, and I know that the new commissioners that are here haven't had the experiences or the amount of time to work with Madam Curry that we have, but I think there is much to be said about stability. I think there's also much to be said about impacts and unintended consequences when we consider shifting someone out of an organization potentially, and how that affects the people that work for her. I am really concerned with where staff is right now. At the idea that we could come back some months down the line and say, you know what? Thank you so much, Ms. Curry. You did great, but we selected so-and-so. Because that doesn't just impact her. That now impacts the entire staff. And I think they're concerned. I think they're concerned. I don't want to go on too long. I am going to put a motion on the floor. And, and, yeah. I'm sorry. I'm going to put a motion on the floor, but I did just want to reiterate my appreciation. I understand, and I don't want any charter to think that I want them any less than I want Ms. Curry. It is just that I understand the very work that has to come out of that office. So I move that we make manager, interim manager Curry permanent in the position.
Welcome back to the room, Mr. Eastman.
You stepped out for a second and?
Is there a second?
I second.
Mr. Chestnut.
So you want to authorize the manager, the mayor, to negotiate with the city manager a salary?
For a permanent contract.
For a permanent contract, okay, thank you. I second that. Now, I want to tell you why I seconded that emotion. That emotion, that motion.
Just a smoky rabbit.
Yes, smoky rabbit. Ready for Motown. Ms. Curry has over 40 years of experience as an administrator of public service. And I pulled her accomplishments since she's been here. She took this job November 15, 2022, and what she walked into, what she's had to deal with, and what she's had to correct. And my office is bringing down some copies so I can go through these with you. But I want to start with the first thing she had to do, the first core plan she had to work with. She focused on stabilization of general government services. And that was, when she walked in the door, as all of you know, we were facing this audit. And she had to tackle that, get the audit resolved, hire someone to get it resolved, and we met the requirement with the state to have that in so that we were not charged, but we had resolved it. We had addressed it. In my opinion, she inherited the nightmare of what's called workday. And she has had to work with that, work it through. We're still correcting it, but it's on its way to being corrected. The general government vacancies, I think. You may have mentioned that. When I came, the vacancies were very, very high. She's been able to get that down. I think it's down to now 12%, I believe. But it was, I was just amazed at how high it was. And I think she's been able to work with the organizational culture. Worked with the other charter officers very well in collaboration for one city. Worked with the charter officers in advancing equity. And she and the GRU, General Government is working together. But I don't think existed in the past. You all know I was here many, many years ago. It was, that was not the atmosphere GRU and General Government. She has worked with the Gainesville Immigrant Neighborhood Inclusion Program with Mr. Polson, Commissioner Sacco.
And on and on.
And on and on. No, 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 I want it in the record.
Yes.
So, so, no, I want to take the time. I want it in the record. The American Rescue Plan, President Biden, what she was able to do with that and in working with our local nonprofit community and getting those funds out. Affordable housing, I think you all heard something about that this morning, and being able to take the housing, bring it under, collapse it under one umbrella. We have $8 million in the Affordable Housing Account that we will be able to provide for our neighbors, our citizens, whatever we want to use, but for our neighbors. I think the Downtown Strategic Plan, the Eastside Health and Economic Development Initiative, the Zero Waste Ordinance, opening of the Clarence R. Kelly Center, Community Relations, the Cadet Program, just near, near, to do. University Avenue and 13th Street redesign. The 8th Avenue and Waldorf Road Project, getting that off the ground. City's website, a new website that is user-friendly, that many of our neighbors have commented on. The Public Works Department reaccreditation. And really, just supporting our community. The other thing I want to say is supporting our community, oftentimes, you don't see city managers involved out in the community. They haven't been for the city of Gainesville. But Ms. Curry is out there. People know who our city manager is. She works with the ministers, and she works with the citizens. She works with, she knocks on the door. They don't knock on her door. But she's out there representing us. And I think it's given the commission a very good name with the community because we're seen as being more engaging of our neighbors. And so with that, I don't think that we could make a better choice. And I, so I strongly endorse the mayor pro tem's motion and urge all of us to move forward. And I hope that we will take charter officers one by one and address this. But on this one, I move that, I second the motion that's on the floor.
Mr. Second.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Duncan Walker, I agree about Madam Curry. Wonderful, she's excellent at her job. She's taken on the challenges. But I would argue that four, well, three, because it's four of them. Three of those other charters have taken on challenges and have held fire at this point and are still standing with grace, dignity, and keeping the city intact. Would you, because I already motioned for one of these to be made permanent prior.
I did.
Would you be a minimal to just honestly saving the city a quarter million dollars and those interns who were there for over a year now being made permanent? Would you entertain that?
All interns permanent?
Yes, minus the auditor, I love Brenda. She's only been on the job for about a week.
But she's done it for 20 years.
She has, she has. But I don't know, I don't know how she's done it here at the top level. That's the only reason I'm not including her. I don't judge her skills. It's they've literally been doing it for a year and shown us that at this level, they are capable. That would be the only reason I ask to have those three. And either way, we can keep looking at Ms. Anderson.
Thank you. And actually, I would, Commissioner Sacco, I heard your motion, what was it, last week at the retreat? And I can definitely appreciate that. I have a lot of respect for Tony and the work that he has put in. It is, I think I told Tony the very first day that I met him, out of water, wastewater, I was just blown away.
By yourself?
Yeah, I didn't know how much I liked water. But first of all, by his, his just warm and welcoming nature and his love and passion and expertise in what he does, but also in how he relates to his team and how they respond and relate to him. So I actually would, yeah.
So for the other three?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can, can, sorry.
Before we, let me have a check on the second.
The second are agrees.
Okay, all right.
Who are the three that we're referring to? Or the other three, or who are we referring to?
Who you're saying right next to.
Okay.
The charter. Right. Benzerrai. Benzerrai.
Attorney Agri, GRU, General Manager, and City Manager. That goes. So there's now a motion on the floor?
Just now's a motion.
Mr. Watson.
I, as a new commissioner, I've had less time to interact with and learn from all of the charters, particularly haven't had time to interview and talk with staff. Again, because I'm working a full-time job and this at current part-time. And so two weeks ago, there was a motion to delay this to the February 16 meeting, to make a decision about whether we're going forward with all five charters with a search process staggered out for the year, roughly $250,000 of expense. And I voted for the motion that failed that would have said, let's give us a couple of weeks to make these decisions about whether we keep some of them permanently, all of them, some of them, none of them. Make a decision at that part, at that point. I have, I know that I personally have not spent the last two weeks engaged with our charter officers to determine whether they should be hired now because the instruction given by this commission was that I am to judge our next charter officers on the process that was supposed to be started. It would cost $250,000, and it would be spread out, staggered between now and, I believe, December, November, for the rest of the year, staggered out. So I know that I personally took my duty to the city, that that is what I'm supposed to be looking for. That's what I'm supposed to be looking for in my next charter officers. So this motion now is a little abrupt, and it may, it may be that, again, I said two weeks ago, we may have the absolute best charters that we will ever get, and we could save ourselves X dollars, X number of dollars by making that decision. That is a decision I wanted to make on February 16 so I could learn a little more about each of them, particularly talk to some staff to see what they feel about. But here it is before us again. And I know that I have not done the due diligence in the past two weeks to make this decision tonight because I was instructed by this commission that the way this is going to work is I'm going to have, hopefully, a stack of applications that will be pared down by our firms who are helping us in the search. And that is how I'd interact, that I'd get citizen feedback for each of them at some sort of a public event. And that's how I've built the past two weeks of my consideration of our charter officers. Thank you.
Any other commissioners?
I'm ruminating.
Okay. Well, I'll throw out my considerations. I don't think it's going to be any surprise to anyone that I support the motion. And I will tell you that I've worked with more charter officers than I should have worked with over the last five and a half years. And I have not worked, I have not seen a group of charter officers work together as well as this group of charter officers works together. I believe if, I believe this gets us to a point where we can take seriously the idea of stability in our workforce, and morale in our workforce. And that doesn't mean that everybody who works for the city of Gainesville is going to appreciate this. I'm sure that there will be people who don't because they're 2,400 people. I believe this gives us the best chance to improve morale overall, though, because people will know who their boss or their boss's boss's boss is going to be for the foreseeable future, all other things being equal. I think that matters. I know that there are positions we have a hard time filling, particularly senior management positions because they don't know who's going to be their boss. And they're not going to uproot and move to Gainesville waiting on that decision. That's a very real thing that has harmed us over the past year. Your plus, I think, for our workforce, for our own priorities, for the things that we said we're going to accomplish as a commission, we are more likely to accomplish those things by passing this motion than we are waiting here. I completely understand what you're talking about. I hear that. And I've, the flip side, though, is I've seen the, for several of these positions already, I've seen what the applicant pool is likely to look like. And I'm telling you, these folks are head and shoulders above what that applicant pool is likely to be. And they also are already doing the work. I would suggest further that if we are not comfortable with them as permanent charters, that we probably ought to rethink them as interns because they've been doing the job long enough that if we're not happy with that, something's wrong. So for a variety of reasons, I absolutely support this motion. I appreciate the motion. I think it is the right path forward for the city of Gainesville. And I want to remind all of you, my colleagues, that if this doesn't work out, it takes one motion to change it.
Any, any meeting.
At any, at any meeting, it can change, which is a precarious position for all of them. And that's an important thing to remember for them looking forward. Mr. Eastman, you had?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm very happy to. I made the motion before, of course. I think in large part to ensure that we're going, we have an election coming up in two years. That means that the three of us that are here will be here, and then three people.
Four.
Four, I'm sorry, of course. Also the mayor.
I'm not calling words.
Yeah, yes. And so I wanted our charter officers to have the kind of job stability where they know that they had a stamp of approval from each one of the commissioners, that we know we're at least going to be here for the next four years. And so, and I want both of my fellow commissioners to feel comfortable. I spent, as I said, more time with the interim charters than they have. But thinking about the next year of spending incredible amounts of hours interviewing folks to come in and the kind of, what, the kind of chaos that that brings in. And then, let's say we find someone new, and then they come in and they start making changes to the organization, which we've already had so much change in this organization. The more I thought about the vote that we made a few weeks ago, the more the pit in my stomach just sort of dropped, where it's like, so this is what my first year on the commission's going to be, is this kind of search process. commission's going to be, is this kind of search process where, like I said, best case scenario, we keep them, or worst case scenario, someone new comes in, and then we're right back to kind of another, another round of changes all over again. I, I, it's something I wanted to bring up before, but I thought I was bringing up quite a bit, but one of the things I like seeing in other governmental entities, the school board does this, is they have their superintendent hired on sort of a contractual basis for renewal. And what I, and so, every two years, they come up and it determines whether or not we want to choose to renew or non-renew that particular contract. And I think what that does is, one of the things I like about that is it, one gives, it takes the kind of the temperature down of all of this. So, the way now, the way that we would let a charter go, is someone has to come with a motion on the table, they hope that they have three other votes, they, and then usually, in order to make sure they have those three other votes, they come with a long list of grievances that they have about the person, which then sort of either loses their relationship with that charter, or it, you know, if they stay, or it drags them through the mud right as they're about to go look for another position. I don't have to mention charter officers, I can think of a couple of them off the top of my head over these last five, 10 years. It seems like a much smoother process to simply say, are we going to renew or non-renew this person on, say, a two-year basis or a three-year basis, you know, maybe in an odd year where we're not having an election, so that there would be a much smoother process of us just kind of determining in a much calmer way as opposed to bring a motion up to renew or non-renew, and then hopefully allow the charter to have a little bit more, either to leave with a sense of grace and dignity, or to, you know, or, you know, to stay at that point. I'm not totally sold on the idea, but I think it's something that would, I think, give, give our other two new commissioners the ability to say, okay, this isn't necessarily permanent, though I think you'll find that the four charters that we're talking about bringing in here are great, and you will be very happy with them. But also, I think it's just a better process overall for how we oversee our charters. And so, I, you know, I think I support the motion, though I'd like to hear what Commissioner Book says, but I also want to throw that out there, something that's been on my mind, and I've been curious what my colleagues think about it.
It's so interesting, this contractual discussion is probably for a different day, because it's not really as dramatic today for the motion. I'm on a year-to-year contract right now, so I understand it, and all managerial employees at the college are actually in that regard. So, it is something that allows a different capability for when you choose to let someone go. I know that if on July 1, I'm at Santa Fe College, I know I got 364 more days unless I do something really bad.
Yeah.
And that's not going to happen. So, I understand that. That's, that's actually a very good discussion, I think, for another day. Very interesting and innovative way to evaluate employees a little differently, that doesn't put them through the mud in a form that's quite like this, a little different. So, that's just related to that. So, I've been thinking about this quite a bit, also, I had no idea that the motion was coming up, because we can't speak about those type of things. But I have been spending quite a bit of time, even before November 8th, the election, getting to understand what the charters do and how they do it by virtue of speaking to community leaders and other people, because that's what you do, to determine, how should I interact? What should we do? What, what's the mechanisms of how we're going to operate effectively? And asking them questions about, how would you like me to operate? Because if they know that and I operate that way, then that's going to make us get things done. And so, I've appreciated that, and I do believe that the collaboration in that regard, even in a short period of time, is enough for me to make an understanding of continuity and stability, right, in an organization. So, it is clear that vacancies and recruitment and actings and interims all are very difficult to get through in an organization for those two factors. And so, I weighed that against this thing where I feel like it's very, very important for process, as I've said, and budget, as I said, and yet, the great upside here is that we have the potential to claw back some monies also. And it's not why we make the decision, don't make a people decision based on money, but bring back those monies. I know I see that as, and it's important. So, any ways that we can do that and still make prudent decisions is probably a very, very good thing. What I didn't understand, Mayor Protem, was, was this for all interims?
It is.
Four on five.
Minus the auditor.
Yeah, minus the auditor.
Those that have been serving for years.
Thank you, actually, that was actually my question, because I know the auditor has simply just taken her interim role, literally within days. All right, so this, this is for four to five. We clearly have to, Clark is our, is our one outlier at the moment, is you're with us at the moment. And it leaves the auditor to potentially be through a process of some sort, because we just haven't had the time to evaluate, if I'm understanding correctly.
Exactly.
Ben?
Hold on, you, one, two, three, fifteen. Are you, Commissioner Book?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Sacco.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Eastman, I don't dislike the idea of a contract. I think you're right, it does make it a little less abrupt in the, I'd like to talk about so-and-so's employment. That's not a good conversation. I don't think any of the ones we've had the first, or the second, or the third time in some cases go very well. I would say if we go to do that, it is not something we can, we'll have to either do it now, as you negotiate with them in their contract, or it'll have to be for the whatever next person sits in that charter position, because they would be bound by the terms of their current contract. And those contracts are without years, they would have to renegotiate it to include that number of years of reevaluation period. So, just wanted to bring up that technical issue. I don't know if they voluntarily in discussions, that's something the mayor would like to bring up in discussions, that they voluntarily approve it, but I don't think you have the votes at the table by the head shaking to instruct the mayor to include that. But it's certainly in topic of conversation now that it's been brought up, that the charters are aware of.
Commissioner Sacco.
Thank you. Well, to your point, I just want to say educators have mastered the art of the annual contract. I mean, they have it down pat. And that's not something I want to venture off on right now, but it's something we can perhaps discuss in a policy meeting if you want to, but I could not support it at this point.
I just threw it out there. I don't necessarily expect for it to be voted on at this moment. Yes, yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's all right. And I appreciate the mayor Protem getting the ball rolling. My thought was, take the manager, then go down each one this afternoon and offer everyone the contract. So, I think Commissioner Sacco's most addition is, is good, you just take everyone. Because they all have done a great job. And if they haven't, we need to let them go at this point, because I don't see how it's going to improve anymore at this point. And I think that the city would be well-served. The 250,000-plus would be saved. But more than that, the morale of our employees would be saved, because I think that they need to know who they're going to work for and their planning. So, I hope we can offer it to everyone, and I hope that we come back to the auditor in three to six months, because I want to say the auditor has been with the city and has over 20 years of experience already. And, but I, I don't want to see the auditor functioning for a year before we come back to that position.
Commissioner Willis, and Commissioner Duncan Walker, Mr. Sacco.
What we, the plan we passed two weeks ago was for city auditor process to start the second week of June, and that was whether this motion at all affects our, our plan, because you said three to six months, that actually lines up. If we didn't change anything, if we hired four, four permanently, we, according to our current plan, we wouldn't get to city auditor for whatever the first week of the process is till the second week of June. So, there is, I don't know whether we would, staff would move that up if we don't give them further instruction, should this motion pass.
Okay.
Well, we, we could ask, my suggestion would be that we ask Ms. Grant to talk to us at the next meeting, give us some options for where we, how we do that particularly. Thank you. Commissioner Walker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, colleagues, for hearing me out. This has been weighing very heavily on my heart, and I want to make sure all of the charters hear me. In making the initial motion that I made, it was to get this ball rolling, okay? So, please, I think all of you know, we all have wonderful relationships and you all understand my support of you. So, I'm grateful that it sounds like this may actually be something that we move forward on. I did want to speak to Commissioner Eastman's suggestions. I would definitely appreciate hearing that at policy. I don't know much about it, it sounds good on its face, but I certainly would love to hear more about how that has worked, not just here, but in other places. And then to Ms. Anderson, who is in the interim role in the auditor's office right now, who does have a wealth of experience. I really am looking forward to evaluating her within the next few months, because I think it's quite possible we may be able to offer something very similar to what we're doing right now. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Okay, we'll turn it over to the public. Love to hear from you.
I think it's obvious that I'm happy, and so, I'm not going to read what I read two hours ago. What I do want to encourage this commission, if it goes in the direction that it's going, we deserve this. The community deserves a functional city government that's acting like adults and doing the work of the people. We, we deserve this. And so, I'm hoping that this receives unanimous support, and I'm hoping from this point on that the fact that I decided to come back from my mental health break, from city commission meetings, to adults doing the work of the people in a professional manner, that we're off to a good track. We might not always agree on everything, but if we do things the right way, in the end, we know that we have the same end goal in mind. And so, I'm hoping that this will pass unanimously, and I'm looking forward to working with you all in the future.
Mr. Walker? Mr. Beatty?
Once again, Joe Beatty, I'm going to talk about process, and I think this is appalling. I think that when the news gets out to the public, they're going to be appalled, not because of the decision that may be made here necessarily, and this has nothing to do with charters individually. It has, as you know, for 15 years, I talk about the process, I talk about being open and doing people's business in the open, and I'm very disappointed that any of you commissioners would think about bringing up something like this, when this room has emptied, when most of the press is gone, this TV4, I guess, just came back, almost missed this news. Your last meeting, it's, Commissioner Willis really named it, you know, you talked about the process, you set it out, you told the public that's what's going to happen. And I can't believe, in the basement of this building, at this time, that any one of you, much less all of you, would consider doing what you're about to do. It's just, you know, you wonder, you want to reestablish the public trust, well, you know, this is certainly not the way to do it, and I would hope that you might reconsider this motion, you would vote it down, you would ask to have it put up at another meeting so the press can inform the public that this is what you're doing, this is what you're thinking. And maybe the public is 100% behind that. They need to know. And if only 5%, if anybody, people need to have the opportunity to speak to you, to speak to these motions, and you've taken the public process more, and the public out of the process. We are at the top of the organizational chart, and, you know, you're trying to diminish us by just calling us all neighbors and we'll all be friendly and stuff. Come on, we've been trying to work with you for years. I just, I, I'm shocked and appalled, and I thank you very much, Commissioner Willis, for saying what you did, and, you know, you're quibbling over $250,000 right now. You spend, I think you spent almost a half a million on the consent agenda today, other days you spend, you know, almost a million. This is the people's business, and you're doing it when everybody's gone. I'm sorry, I hope you vote it down, you want to bring it back up later and say you've changed your minds about your process. But this is why the public doesn't trust you.
Yes, so, good afternoon, Mayor, Commissioner Scott. So, again, what we have here is a case of being in the basement, not in the normal meeting area, late in the afternoon, when no one's watching, commissioners putting a motion on the floor for an item that was not advertised on the agenda, so no one had any notice. I came back and somebody said, hey, this is what's going on. Yeah, you can, but the question is, should you? The answer is no. I too believe in process, and this is a very bad process and precedent that's being set here, because at prior meeting, it was concluded that we would have a search process, and yes, that costs money, but you don't know what other candidates are there, and I don't want to take away from Reverend Rawls, because I think I agree with a lot of what he said in terms of some performance of some of the charter officers, but also think in areas of the utility, which is under siege and a mountain of debt, you know, having generation experience, power generating experience is important. Mr. Kunka Kim, with all due respect, came for the water system, different animal. Likewise, again, we don't know what candidates are out there across the charters, not saying that existing charter shouldn't be hired, but this is a case of where the commission said one thing and now doing exact opposite down in the basement. That looks shady. So, again, to the process, there were some comments made about the city's new website. Well, let me tell you, you won't find a link to Commissioner's email archive on the new website, because I don't really think it's user-friendly. I think it's a step backwards to, to a lack of transparency. You only want to put things on there that people want to see. This projection of a beautiful day in the neighborhood, everything's well in Gainesville, and the citizens that come and spend their time at the meetings to try to appeal to you, to tell you to fix the problems that you should be focused on, you know, their, their points of view don't matter. But again, I am process-oriented, I think there should be a process, there's been a process of a search, a search process for the hiring of every other charter officer in the past, and this whole blanket idea of, you know, it may be well-intended, but this blanket idea of just we're going to make everyone permanent in late afternoon with no public input, where most of the people are speaking against this because of the process, I think needs to be considered. I think we need to advertise this on the regular agenda and let people come and say what they need to say. Thank you. And I'll conclude my time early. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, Commissioner Book.
There is actually, there is validity in that we have an, you know, an item that was not advertised, that is, it was a very, very large decision in that regard, then we're making a decision, go say, oh, I might, I may have weighed in on that. I do think that the motion that the mayor Protem made is likely to be an aspect of a decision that's going to go forward, because regardless of what happens in a week or two weeks, if we were to re-advertise it, I think, my sense is that the vast majority of the input we receive will not change our minds, and it's not because we're hardened with a particular decision, it's because the feedback will probably support what we're thinking at the moment. What I would think is, the, the aspect of us potentially voting in two weeks would be good, but there is a motion on the floor, and, you know, it's pretty clear how we're going to, how we're going to weigh in. I do, I do support these particular charters. I think it would be a step in the right direction to potentially have that vote in two weeks, but I'll respect the motion and see, see what happens, you know, if we were to put that forth in two weeks as opposed to today down here. That does resonate with me.
I agree with Commissioner Book, I, this, public did make some very good points, and I'm still, I'm still going to support this, but in the future, please, I feel passionate about this, so I'm willing to vote yes on it, because I think it's really important that we put some stability into our local government, but please try to put things on the agenda in some, in some way, so that, I, I'm the kind of guy who, before I, you know, before I buy anything, I spend months, you know, reviewing it, I'm like, I'm very, I like to know every little thing, that's why I happened to have looked at the plat and knew the, you know, I, I like to know my agenda items, I get that things will change on here, but just for the sake of the rest of the commission, and just us and things like this, try to be put on, unless they're an emergency, that they try to be put on so that we have some time to review. But I will support it, and, because I think it's important that we do move forward.
Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. First, Mr. Book, to your point in terms of feedback, since this conversation began, and actually, since--
Since this conversation began, and actually since interims started entering into this whoa, you've been interim for a long time, many of us who've been here have been receiving phone calls, have been inundated with emails, et cetera, I've been approached in the grocery stores, et cetera, et cetera, about when are we going to make, when are we going to have some stability? Then the conversations got a little more specific. When are we going to hire those interims? And so this was, for me, not about being in a basement after everybody is gone. I think I've been a person who's been very forthright in the things that I have put forward and the things that I've supported. So certainly, it's not about me trying to do anything behind anyone's back. I welcome the opportunity to speak to all of my constituents in all of Gainesville. What I will say is, this has been an urgency. And so I agree with you, Commissioner Eastman, absolutely. Things should be put on agendas. I don't like surprises either, and I've been faced with a lot of them. Okay, a lot of times I walk into, or I have previously walked into commission meetings where things have been unfamiliar. This was an emergent situation based on what I have been hearing from the public. And so I chose to respond the way that I did. It's also based on not just the public, it is based on our staff, who I've heard the whispers of, who I felt like needed this. And so when would have been the time, when would have been the place? We could have agenda this potentially, but today it was laid on my heart to do it, and so I did. And I thank anyone who supports it.
All right, Commissioner Scott.
Thank you, Commissioner. To Commissioner Duncan Walker's point, you know, we did have the discussion on the agenda two weeks ago. I think that was an ample opportunity for anyone who had thoughts or comments on it to come at that time to give their opinion. Some of them did. My motion hasn't changed much. Like, I would like to keep people, they are good. But we had the call-in, we had the phone message, we had the same email, we had the comment on east guard. We had all the opportunities two weeks ago. Now, if you brought this to the table, you know, six months down the line, decided to make motion as we're halfway through the process, I would understand a lot of these comments. I'm going to support it just because I want this started, and then negotiating with four people is going to take a while. Sorry, but that's why you have the job. And I'd rather get started, you know, rather than later. And I feel that, was it a perfect way to do it? No. Close enough end result and a lot more stability rather than waiting, I feel like three weeks at this point, to start this all over again when we know the outcome. I think I'd rather just vote today and end at the ballpark.
Commissioner Tissman.
And I think at the mayor's first press conference, I believe he indicated at that press conference that he, he had planned to come to the commission with a different proposal, but a proposal to address the charter officer. So it's been a discussion for the two weeks ago, January 5th, then January 9th, and today. And then I just want to say one other thing. There will be times when things that are, that you consider important are not submitted as a, as an item for the agenda. That's just the way a commission works. So I just want to say, don't expect every time for issues to be printed on the agenda for you to vote on. They will come up as items.
As much as possible.
As much as possible, as much as possible, but they will come up.
Okay, any other commissioners? All right, I think I see where this is going, and I'm glad I knew Betsy's watching upstairs. And then I hope she'll start scheduling with other assistants pretty quickly because it is going to take a while to get these negotiated as we move forward. To those of you who are in discussion right now, I imagine this is an uncomfortable process to sit through, even though we've all said very nice things about you. It is not the sort of thing that happens every day. So I want you all to know how much I appreciate you and your patience and willingness to go through this, this very different sort of procedure. I do hear everyone in the community, and I appreciate what you've had to say. My experience has been very much like Commissioner Duncan Walker's. Folks that are grabbing me in church at the grocery store, that are wanting to pick up, pick up my kids. People want motion on this. The community, the neighbors want motion on this. And I think this is the right motion. So, Commissioner Book.
Yeah, I see no intent here to try and ambush anything. So that's clear. I hear what you're saying, Mayor Pro Tem. This was not a planned attempt to try and undermine. It's unfortunate that the tech puts us down in the basement, and it's in the afternoon. The community input that I'm familiar with is hugely supportive. And we have had occasions to actually discuss this already. In a perfect world, I certainly would like to be voting on this in two weeks. That's not actually going to happen, so we'll vote today.
All right, without a delay, any further? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
No, I'm sorry. Okay, so that is six ones.
Thank you.
All right, any other commission comment? Can you top that, Commissioner?
No, I can't top that, but I've got to go to a little mundane issue that citizens have been calling me about, and that has to do with the January 5th ordinance. And we ask, we direct staff to develop an ordinance and come back to us. They're concerned because this did not get to the plan board, on the plan board agenda. And by not getting on the plan board agenda, now it seems that it won't, because it didn't get advertised, now it seems that it won't, we won't be addressing the easy ordinance until March. And so I don't want it to appear that people have difficulty with the direction that the commission is going or is taking on this issue. And I just want to bring that up. I just want to find out what happened.
Well, from our perspective, from the city attorney's office, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, I think force is coming up also. Yeah, that direction was acted on immediately in conjunction with the Department of Sustainable Development with an effort to get it on the plan board agenda as soon as possible. It is a process, and that's the process that I think we're facing. And I think that the time for advertising just wasn't possible for the January 25th or 26th of plan board meeting, but it certainly is scheduled and on track for the February meeting, which I think is February 23rd. Ideally, if an advisory opinion comes out of the plan board at that time, either way, it should be able to get placed onto that March, the first meeting in March, I think, for the city commission for first reading. After which time, if it passes, it goes off to the state again, and we go forward. The, yeah, I don't think it is, it is, it is not any reflection of a lack of diligence, I think, that the advertising couldn't be accomplished prior to this plan board meeting in January. In fact, quite the contrary, I think every effort's being made to effect the will of the commission as quickly and efficiently as possible. It's just that it's a process.
Thank you. Well, we don't ever want to give the public the impression that staff does not agree with the commission's direction.
That's absolutely true. I mean, I think we are absolutely committed to carrying out the direction of the commission. As we were committed to carrying out the direction of the commission last year, we are equally committed to carry out the direction of the commission now. That is, that is our role. The commission is part of our client, and we take that very seriously.
Thank you.
And I know that the department has, I won't speak for them, but I am certainly proud to work with them in their diligence and efforts as well.
Thank you. The only thing that I would add is that we at DSD are able to answer citizens' questions as to timing and schedule every time they call us, and we're able to do that. And we are in line for that February plan board meeting.
Any further questions?
No, I just wanted it on the table. Thank you.
Okay, I want to tell you all how much I appreciate you. This is an interesting afternoon. We've dealt a lot, and we've dealt with it like professionals. And I appreciate you. So with that, we will return, we're adjourned, and we'll be back at 5:30.
So we have a lot of fun business to do this afternoon here in our safety room. We are back in session. I'm going to come right over here for, grab my agenda. So let's line up along here and we'll face the flag over there. Glad we had a great turnout for y'all this evening. So here's what we're gonna do. We're gonna have y'all leave the pledge and then we'll get the photos and make sure we get those out to you all. Again, very, very much appreciate you coming in. This is, this is a different thing for us. We are starting, first time was, it was last meeting, but we're, we're gonna have scout troops and safety patrols come in and lead the pledge of allegiance for the evening session and all our meetings for, for the foreseeable future. So y'all tell the, tell everybody you know that you were among the first. So, alright, ready when you are.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance to our country. Those who are uniformed, please salute. All others, please place your hand over your heart. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Salute. Please be seated.
Mr. Mayor, can we get a picture with this troop?
Absolutely. Commissioner, come on up, yeah. Jen, wherever you think is best.
That'll be fine.
Y'all, commissioners, come on over.
Do I blend in with the children?
Wherever we're comfortable.
Everyone have a good day.
Alright, thank you very much. Alright, we have some proclamations. Let's make sure we get photos with the proclamations too. So first, I'm gonna call up, I'm not sure how we're doing this one, but we have proclamation for Zero Waste Week. And we're, are we gonna do this on Zoom? Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, tell me how we're doing that. Hi Nina. Okay, it's my first proclamation presentation, so bear with me. It's, it's not short. Whereas, zero waste is a system where nothing is wasted and resources stay in use. And whereas, zero waste is a system the community is collectively working towards. And whereas, the repurpose project, Life Unplastic and Zero Waste Gainesville, want to encourage valuing the earth and its resources and instilling a system of reuse. And whereas, we celebrate the community working together to reduce consumption, reuse and repurpose and recycle. And whereas, we are committed to reduce food waste at the source and compost the rest. And whereas, we invite all City of Gainesville citizens to join us in seven days of zero waste education, action items and solutions. Now therefore, I Harvey L. Ward Jr., by the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Gainesville, do hereby proclaim January 22nd through 29th, 2023 as Zero Waste Week in the City of Gainesville and invite all our neighbors to join me in working towards zero waste. And witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Gainesville, Florida this ninth day of January 2023. I only wish that there were a good way to get this to you. So, so I'm Nina Smart-Elick. This is Commissioner Easton's wife, who received this.
Should I, I'll bring it to you Nina.
Did you want to make some comments Dana? Oh no. Pardon? Can't hear. Okay. Thank you. Very good. Okay. I think we have a few folks in the house for this one. Whereas, Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated, historically black college fraternal organization, was started January 9th, 1914 at Howard University in Washington DC by the Honorable A. Langston Taylor, Leonard F. Morse and Charles I. Brown. The founders' purpose was to create an organization that viewed itself as a part of the general community rather than apart from general community. The honorable founders wanted to organize a Greek letter fraternity that would exemplify the ideals of brotherhood, scholarship and service, while taking an inclusive perspective to serve the community as opposed to having an exclusive purpose. And whereas, from its inception, the honorable founders conceived Phi Beta Sigma as a mechanism to deliver services to the general community. Rather than gaining skills to be utilized exclusively for themselves and their immediate families, they held a deep conviction that they should return their newly acquired skills to the communities from which they had come. This deep conviction was mirrored in the fraternity's mottoes, "Culture for Service and Service for Humanity." And whereas, for 109 years, Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity has contributed to mankind in all areas of our society. It has provided service around the United States and worldwide through a membership of more than 200,000 men in over 700 chapters in the United States, Africa, Europe, Asia and the Caribbean. The brothers of Phi Beta Sigma are the fraternity's most valuable resource and strength. They are the primary means by which the Phi Beta Sigma objectives will be achieved. And whereas, the Epsilon Omicron Sigma chapter was chartered in November 20th, 1973 in conjunction with the Zeta Kappa chapter at the University of Florida in Gainesville, Florida. The men of Phi Beta Sigma have contributed to the Gainesville community through the awarding of academic scholarships, hosting and supporting food drives, men's health seminars, assisting with the facilitation of COVID-19 vaccinations during the peak of the pandemic and partnering with local national panellanic council organization to support the local Meals on Wheels program. In conjunction with all sigmas here and in the state of Florida and from around the continental United States, the Epsilon Omicron Sigma chapter of Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity Incorporated celebrates hosting its fraternity's 2023 Florida State Conference in the City of Gainesville, January 27th through 29th, 2023. Now therefore, I Harvey L. Ward Jr., by the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Gainesville, do hereby proclaim January 27th through 28th, 2023 as Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity 2023 Florida State Conference Weekend in the City of Gainesville and invite all our neighbors to join me in recognizing this event. And witness whereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Gainesville, Florida this 10th day of January AD 2023. Gentlemen? Mr. Mayor. Sir. Let's get a, Randy, let's get a photo.
Chief, where's your chat?
I was working. Good work.
Alright gentlemen, good work. Who wants to make a comment or two here?
I will. So I am the, the chapter president. Why, I want to thank the City of Gainesville, the Gainesville Commission, City of Gainesville at large for having us here. If you look at the words that the mayor just exhibited and look at the members that are present, that's exactly the principles that our organization, organization holds. We're gonna have a lot of fun next week. We're gonna have a lot of members here. This is the first time we've had our state conference here in over a decade. So we'll look at having roughly 300 members of the fraternity here. And then, of course, national officers from around the world be coming to Gainesville to celebrate the 2023 conference. Again, thank you and God bless everybody and hope and pray over all of us as we get to celebrate something we haven't done in a very long time. Thank you.
Again, thank you commissioners as well.
Rabbi Goldman, you wanna come on up? Or whoever else is going to? Whereas, the remembrance of the millions of victims of the Holocaust, the vast majority of whom were Jewish, but also included Serbs, Roma, homosexuals and the disabled, is an expression of reverence for the innocents caught in the Nazi state institute Web of Death. And whereas, the Nazis in the years of 1933 through 1945 brought one of the world's most cultured and educated societies to criminal barbarism. And whereas, there is a need to understand and study the course of this human catastrophe and to create a living culture of memory so that we as a community never forget that such prejudices are not only possible but still with us. And whereas, in honoring and remembering the righteous and the survivors, we celebrate the beauty of the human spirit. The few righteous in the conquered countries put their lives and the lives of their families with the persecuted to protect man's humanity to his fellow man. And whereas, we, the City of Gainesville actively rededicate ourselves to work in a free and just community that will be a moral compass for our society. Now therefore, I Harvey L. Ward Jr., by the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Gainesville, do hereby proclaim January 27th, 2023 as Holocaust Remembrance Day in the City of Gainesville and invite all our neighbors to join me in honoring and remembering those that were affected by the Holocaust and the pledge to never forget our commitment to standing firm against antisemitism, hatred and other forms of bigotry. And witness thereof, I have heretofore set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Gainesville, Florida this 17th day of January AD 2023.
Thank you, I appreciate it. Just a few words if you don't mind. So quote, "First they came for the socialists and I did not speak out because I was not a socialist. Then they came for the trade unionists and I did not speak out because I was not a trade unionist. Then they came for the Jews and I did not speak out because I was not a Jew. Then they came for me and there was no one left to speak for me." Today I begin with that quote because, from Martin Niemöller, his written words just after the Holocaust arguing against apathy because it's that type of passivity that allowed for the extermination of 6 million Jews and many others. So let's look at the numbers, what actually happened. On the eve of the Holocaust in 1939, the world Jewish population was approximately 16.6 million out of 2.3 billion, about 7.5%. Today, there are only 15.5 million living Jews. In other words, 83 years later, there's a million less Jewish people than there were then. Yet there's 8 billion people in the world, so only about 1.9%. For many of us, it's personal and quite so. Those numbers are actually our family members. And yet to some, those, those statistics might be appealing. We're seeing a huge uptick in hate crimes against Jews around the world in the media from well-known people, in Ukraine where the propaganda is to rid the government of Nazis. Really? How is it even possible that government's run by a Jewish person? It's distant, I understand. How are we doing closer to home here in Gainesville? Over the past year, we've had very visible antisemitic, visible demonstrations in the form of lit, blitz dispersed across the city. Back in 2019, I oversaw the government with many of you and yet found myself in a situation where I had responsibility in helping to ensure the safety of the city and residents due to the white supremacist Richard Spencer when speaking at the university, many of you will remember. By the way, I think all of us working together put him out of business. Those are really just a few highlights, a few of the, just to highlight the issue. My own professional and personal story here in Gainesville. I had also numerous antisemitic encounters, both public and private. Very little spoke up. So today, we are speaking up with others also with me. I hope you all as well with this proclamation, the first in a decade and by your own, your own voice. Thank the mayor for the proclamation. A very special thanks to Commissioner Chestnut who took this issue quite seriously and helped make this happen. Never forget, silence is acceptance. Thank you for your time today and please remember this day and all others. Thank you.
Y'all come up.
Just wanna give a blessing and thanks to all the elected officials here for serving on behalf of all people in this great city of Gainesville and continuing to guarantee that no hate or bias is acceptable in our community and may extension in the entire world. In honor of the International Holocaust Remembrance Day on January 31st, there'll be Courage, Resilience and Hope Never Again Event open and we invite the entire community. I will leave these announcement flyers for each member of the commission and the community and God bless you all.
Thank you so much. Yeah, all of you are certainly welcome to stay with us through the rest of the evening. We have a relatively short agenda, but I certainly also understand if she does not stay with us.
Hi, our next item is early public comment.
Yeah, nobody signed up for early public comment, okay.
Our next item is the first reading of ordinance 2022-241 and ordinance amending the code of ordinances to include clearboarding standards. An ordinance of the City of Gainesville, Florida amending Section 6-5 temporary boarding and sealing of buildings and Section 16-20 standard for repair, vacation, demolition, temporary board and seal or abatement to reorganize and clarify the applicability of the code sections, providing a severability clause or repealing clause and an immediate effective date.
Mr. Person, are you gonna present this for us?
Yeah, Andrew Person, Special Advisor. So, you know, this is, I think, our third conversation that we've had about clearboarding. If you recall, this came up before the commission back in the fall with a discussion about, that was generated from the target in the bottom of the standard. The commission at that time gave direction to the City Attorney's Office and my staff to implement a change to the clearboarding ordinance to apply to all buildings regardless of, of the status. If you recall, prior to that direction, the clearboarding requirement and just for, you know, for the edification of the new commission, clearboarding, I refer to clearboarding, it's essentially plexiglass coverings over windows or doors or other openings in structures. The intent being that clearboarding allows for visibility through the structure as opposed to, to plywood. The, the current ordinance only applies to dangerous buildings and these are buildings that have been deemed dangerous by the city because they have some major housing flaw, either the roof is bad or the, some other compromise to the building envelope. There was a discussion that we had last time around regarding the relative value of requiring clearboarding on dangerous buildings which oftentimes have major flaws. We presented some information from staff and in some cases, the clearboarding itself exceeded the cost of just demoing the structure or demolishing the structure. And so the commission gave direction to apply the clearboarding standard to all buildings that have boarding. So for the, the target, if you all passed this motion, we would then, you know, reach out to the, to the target and tell them they need to take down their, their plywood and put up clearboarding instead. Or take the, take the boarding off entirely, so. And I'm here to answer any questions or get into any, any amount of detail you'd like.
Mr. Secretary?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hi, Mr. President. So we've had a couple conversations about this, but the city is also bound by this code, right?
That's correct.
What's our budget for clearboarding?
We have, what's, we, 3,500? So we have a roughly $3,500 budget for board and seal of, of all structures.
So do we get to board and seal all of our structures that we have to?
No, we have roughly, I think, a 35 structure range of dangerous buildings that are currently boarded with plywood. When we did some estimates before, clearboarding was roughly about five times as expensive as, as plywood. And then, as I mentioned, in some cases, clearboarding, the materials themselves would exceed the cost of just demolishing the structure. So there is some, you know, some value, balance there.
So, I, I'm gonna be honest, I don't remember the conversation in the poll. I really don't. Maybe I was sick that day. I don't remember it. Because I think after having spoken with codes like a year ago plus now, I saw that issue, that it is an expense that even we can't afford. I think we're gonna just have questions then public, then motions?
Right.
Cool. Can I state my intention before that? I'm trying to get the picture right. Thank you for the work on this. I do think if we have any boarding policy, it should apply across the board and across the board to everyone equally. Thank you, Omi. But given the, so the theory was great and I know why we did it. I supported it at the original time, but maybe two years ago now that we did it. The fiscal reality of it, even for us, is an impossibility. Like it's, it's not happening. Like I see plenty of buildings that are boarded up and it's with plywood and they're hiding ours and other people because they just can't afford it. So while I supported the original theory, the original time we did this, like I intended to ask you guys to go and, it's been a day of this, repeal this. Because it just, it's not working. It's not meeting, it's, it's intent, I don't think. And I don't think the numbers show that it is, given that our whole budget is 3,500, not 1,000?
Right. We, we estimated back when this was originally discussed that it would cost roughly about $95,000 to clearboard all of the structures that were currently boarded. And so when the commission passed that motion and changed the ordinance, we contacted or sent letters, I should say, to all of those properties that were currently boarded, informing them about the requirement to clearboard. The issue with that is most of those properties are either out of town owners or predominantly heirs properties that we already have trouble getting service on. And that the, whether it's plywood or whether it's clearboarding, that's the least of the issue with, with the properties. So, so when the commission passed that, I didn't, I don't want the commission to think that we didn't do, you know, take steps to implement. We did, it's just that ultimately, the next step for that is the city to use our board and seal contractor to go and board and seal those with clearboarding and then assess that property against the cost of clearboarding, which in case of heirs property, it's just going to, you know, churn essentially, yeah, so.
No, so I follow the process. I know, I know how we got here. I think I'm just sitting two years later looking at, at the reality. Because some buildings are a danger, some buildings are attractive nuisances when they're just abandoned and the window or doors are left open. I certainly saw one that looked like a bit of a drum den because it wasn't boarded up and it was just, the door was off the hinges. There was no door, the windows are open. My tour with codes was very enlightening that day. It was just an open invitation. So at that point, you know, we have the option to go in and board it, but we can't afford to board it. I think I'd rather go with plywood and be able to seal a space that is attractive nuisance or dangerous than to leave it open for want of funds to do that. Unless someone wants to suggest we give you hundreds of thousands of dollars for clearboarding, which can be reused. But I don't, I don't see that as a viable option either. So I'm open to hearing everyone else, but thank you for the work you did with legal on this. But I think, I think a different direction is needed. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Buck?
Two, two very quick contextual questions, since obviously we weren't here for the preceding discussions. Hazardous and dangerous structures only. That's what this compiles, this is what this targets, correct? So basically life safety types of violations and?
Right. Anything that we were, we've deemed dangerous, meaning that we don't want, you know, easy access to the property. And so those are, those are a lot of the primarily residential structures, although we do have some commercial structures that do fall under that category as well.
And so the second one simply deals with the, the requirement for some other surface other than plywood? What was the, what was the rationale for that?
Well, the, the idea being that clearboarding is, is visible. So in the, in the, you know, ideal state, you would have a residential structure that would be boarded but not deteriorated to, to a point that essentially that the, the cost, you know, of the clearboarding doesn't equal out the cost of demoing the structure. And then you put up clearboarding so that there's greater visibility to the structure. It doesn't, it's a, it's a visual blight. It looks nicer than it does with plywood. The challenges, you know, discussed are primarily that the clearboarding is, is a lot more expensive than the boarding with plywood. And oftentimes, because these are, are being cut to the openings, we can't, and they're being, oftentimes being screwed into the being, oftentimes being screwed into the, into the framing, they're, they're more difficult to remove and, and, you know, any reuse would require, like, potentially recutting it to a different size, so. There's some logistics issues as well.
So, one additional, so that makes me think on the rationale side, that there probably is some incentive to pass on increased cost to somebody who has a dangerous and hazardous structure, because I'm assuming what we want them to do is really remediate and not make it a dangerous or hazardous structure. So, if it costs more for a owner to have to pay more to do that, maybe they may take the actions to actually do something to make it less dangerous. Is there any, any thought along those lines?
No, but I think, I think you, you absolutely captured. Our goal with dangerous buildings is not to board them attractively. Our goal with dangerous buildings is to remediate them, either through, through the property owner renovating and fixing up and removing the violation, or in some cases, the city moving forward and demolishing the structure through our, through our demo contracts.
Yeah, just a, a question by Commissioner Sack actually made me think about that, so I appreciate you bringing up that question. I appreciate the Commissioner bringing up that question, Mr. Mayor, because it made me think a little further.
Commissioner Testa and Commissioner Willis.
I pass. My question was along the same lines as Commissioner Buck's. I was trying to figure out how we got here, but it was a safety issue, and I'm just thinking of undue burden on businesses that really can't afford this, including the City of Gainesville.
Commissioner Willis.
Hi, Commissioner. I have a question, I believe in the draft is line fifty-three, the section says, that are visible from the street shall be secured, and just one clarification on the definition of the street, whether that includes alleyways or other drives that are some, not traditionally thought of as the street, so I just wanted some clarification on that.
It, it would, because street is broadly defined in the city's code, so it would include any alleyways, public or private. But I think the intent with that is, if it's like a, you know, a rear lot, you know, to rear lot, and you wouldn't require the clearboarding on like the back of the building essentially, where there's no visibility that the public could conceivably get to.
Thank you. Commissioner Sack.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Person, have we been able to recover any of those costs when we clearboard and then attach the cost to the property? Have we been able to recover those, any of the properties?
No, because generally speaking, our board and seal contractor likes to get paid for the work that they complete for us, and so, because we only have a very limited budget for board and seal, we've been, as I mentioned, we contacted all the property owners who have, who have plywood up, informing them of the change, but the city hasn't proactively gone out and installed clearboarding because of the issue that we would then turn around and bill that, the cost of that, and it, and again, it's not, not in our budget essentially.
And have we just been fining them otherwise?
Yeah, I mean, we have other code enforcement processes for that.
Okay, but I was wondering if, like, we preemptively gone ahead and just, like, proactively done it and then have a plan somehow to reduce the cost, and I was wondering if that had actually been successful. We haven't even tried it.
Right, we do, we have, we have a separate demolition budget, and we do periodically... Right, we do periodically demolish dangerous buildings, you know, obviously with all the proper notice and whatnot, but, but that's, ultimately, that's, you know, and then when the building's gotten to that point, no amount of Plexiglas is gonna save it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, just my two cents on this, I, from a practical standpoint, we can't afford to do it, and other folks can't afford to do it. But part of the point is, as Commissioner Buck alluded, it's to create a financial disincentive to leave an abandoned property. Now, that comes down in two ways, one of which works and one of which doesn't. It works if you're talking about out-of-town owners, who are just collecting property as they can, and will eventually build something that we maybe would rather they didn't build on it. From that perspective, we want to, for those folks to have a financial disincentive to, to leave a property run. We don't want that to happen. We want them, something to move them on and make them move forward. On the other hand, a significant portion of these are heirs' property, and they are the way they are because nobody's really sure who's supposed to pay for it, and the person who might be the one who's supposed to pay for it can't. And there's no reason bad insult to injury to those folks who are having trouble with the property in the first place. All that said, we've got to get to a point in our city where we are comfortable saying, this property is a problem, and somebody's gotta do something about it. We have a disproportionate, for a city of our size, number of properties that have been let go, that are not places where, where we can have housing for people, that, that are also devaluing the rest of the neighborhood and hurting, they're literally hurting their neighbor's value by continuing to be a place where, where bad things happen and where vermin populate and, and all that sort of thing. We've got, we've marched up to the line of being intentional about that several times over the last few years, and we always walk back. There's always a reason to walk it back, because of course there is. But we've got to figure out some way forward on this, because there are too many neighborhoods in our community, too many streets in our community where every other house is an abandoned property, and that's not helping anybody. And part of the answer is probably us reaching out to be helpful to the owner more than we have been, through programs like heirs' property in my neighborhood and those sorts of things. But there's gotta be another way to, to be helpful in that process, but also a way to create that disincentive to just let your property sit there and rot, if you are somebody who can afford it. I'm not sure what that path forward is, but it is something we need to be considering in the coming months, because it's holding our neighborhoods back in a variety of ways. Just my two cents on this. Commissioner Buck, and then Commissioner Sack. I just hear the terms dangerous and hazardous and life safety, and that trumps all other considerations, especially when it's in a neighborhood and the people it might impact when I see those type of homes. I would hope we have no city properties that are falling within this, but if we do, that's something we need to address immediately. You set the tone for what we do. That, that's something I'd actually like to see. At a different day would be, do we have any properties that currently fall within this that we're gonna have to clearboard, because they shouldn't be there? That's the first thing, we can't have them. And I, I support this, and I make the motion, and I'm gonna do a better job than I did earlier, which is that the City Commission adopt proposed ordinance 2022-241, an ordinance amending the code of ordinance to include clearboarding standards as written on this page.
Commissioner Sack, are you...
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Person, I know I asked if we've recovered these from electorally clearboarding, we haven't done that. From the not heirs' property, from just out-of-town owners, have you been able to recover any of the fines accruing on those properties until they remediate the issue?
If I understand the question, we, so we, we have a process for all similar code enforcement violations where we cite the property, we try to give them time to come into compliance. If they don't, we go to the special magistrate. So, we, the staff, we don't impose fines, it's the magistrate who does through judgment, and then fines start accruing. So, and we have, we have properties all over the city. If those fines accrue to a point, those usually get converted to a lien against the property within a few months, and then once the, in some cases, fines continue to accrue and build up. If you remember, what was it, last, last year, the year before, we actually had a property right on Roper Park where we had significant liens on, and the city, to the mayor's point, proactively used code enforcement in that case, and we're, we're moving forward with potentially demoing the structure, which then helped precipitate a sale of the property, and now it's, it's renovation, as you can see, it's currently under renovation. So, I think code enforcement, while it's not the first and only tool in the toolbox, like, it is a powerful tool when used in conjunction with, with a lot of the other programs that the city is, is working on, so.
Well, thank you. I think my, in a similar term, have any of those cases, you know, like this situation, like, I think one example, kind of come to a close that is successful, either by...
Related to clearboarding?
Yeah, either leading to clearboarding or, you know, model, no.
No.
The fines are still...
Yeah, I mean, because these are, these are like predominantly heirs' properties where we have trouble with services.
I think I should have asked for, like, the breakdown between out-of-town versus heir's property.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Do you happen to know how many off the top of your, we talked about a couple?
I think...
Thousand, two hundred?
Thirty-some odd, I think. Boarded structures.
Over fifty structures.
Oh, okay, over fifty structures.
Okay. Predominantly heirs' property.
Predominantly, yeah.
But, and, oh, sorry.
I was not done. Sorry. Through those, about fifty, I, I guess, when we get to the magistrate, sometimes we reduce liens, and we do get to that amount, and we reduce it, hopefully we just agree that you get to decide that reduction with the magistrate on your own without really involving It has the potential to be reduced at that level and kind of forgiven, and I know we do that all the time, with liens to a certain amount. I don't want to have penalties accruing on a property because it is heirs' property, because as the mayor said, no one knows who's supposed to do it, and the average bear doesn't know half of code at this level. Now, you know, don't have your lawn overground, don't, don't have like a junk car in the yard, you don't know I have to clearboard.
Right.
And so, you're penalizing for not knowing something they wouldn't even know if they knew they were the person in charge. And I know that there's a potential solution at the magistrate level to reduce the lien and all the fines attached, but that is still a penalty that we are putting on a situation that you and Mr. Backhouse have painted as predominantly only heirs' property. And I don't feel good about that, because, because I've worked with some of the people trying to clear up the heirs' property issue. It is, it's, it's kind of like I'm doing a ball of string.
Yeah.
You think you got one string, and you're like, oh, there's another. And you turn one way, and it just gets tighter, and you aren't actually making progress. It's a long and laborious consequence of horrendous practices. So, I don't, I understand the safety aspect, but I also understand we're penalizing people who have already faced consequences due to poor government. So, so I think you understand where I'm caught here.
I do, yeah, and we, we have had some instances where we've had heirs' properties that came to us, the, in one instance, we had a, a woman who was living in a grandmother's house and had gone through the heirs', not, not the city's heirs' property program, but had cleared all the heirs' title issues. And then, there was a lien, I can't remember, was it like twenty or thirty thousand? Was that granddaughter? It had a significant lien, and so, we were able to take it to the magistrate. Staff recommended a full rescission, the magistrate upheld that, I think it even came to the Commission at the time you guys did that. So, it, it does happen, it's, but it is fewer and farther between because of all the challenges with, with heirs' properties. What I was gonna suggest is, from the CRA discussion this morning about the housing programs and bringing back, you know, some information about those, we're happy to pull in the heirs' property information that we have as it relates to code enforcement cases to help sort of round out some of that discussion, and I think you guys are maybe having that in February, so we can bring some more data about that, the, where the structures are, how many are heirs' properties, how many are, you know, potentials or LLCs or, or investment holdings.
I think I would appreciate that aspect, so I'd, I'd rather we help people than penalize them for things that they don't know are their problem. So, I'm still, given the motion on the table, I'm still kind of questionable, because the mechanism's there, but we saw the hoops people still have to jump through. Even if we, you know, clear the title, we then still have to go through you and then the magistrate, and that's time people have to take off work, that's time people have to invest, and it's, again, you're penalizing then for something that wasn't their fault to be involved.
And, and we can, we can bring a list of heirs' properties cross-linked with properties that we have liens running on, we have all that data.
And that, that's great, like, I, I want to know that, I just, I don't know how I feel about the draft ordinance having that information before us, because on the one hand, well, it's fifty properties, but those are fifty families that, that have to go through this process, if they go through this process, that maybe get the liens removed. So, I just, I, I feel questionable about it, and I, I think I'll be right at that, but thank you, Mr. Person.
Of course.
Commissioner Mike, my question, I mean, kind of why I jumped in, is it was sort of a jumping off from what Randall was saying, which you sort of answered, is would this help circle people into some of our programs, would allow them to untie those things, and that it would sort of precipitate that process, which of course opens up, as you said, kind of another layer to the onion that is, you know, as we're moving forward with this. So, I don't have any questions on that.
Any other questions, Commissioner Buck? Commissioner Buck.
Kind of to Commissioner Eastman's point, my question then is, how much money do we currently have in these programs? Because if we don't have the money there, then we're just diverting people to something else that's not there. Yeah.
In the heirs' property program?
In the heirs' property.
I think it was half a million matter managers?
Is there still half a million?
Yes, it was a total half a million for two years? I think it was two or three years.
Budget a million and a half for the end of the...
Twenty-nine. Twenty-two, twenty-nine. It takes a while. Right. I, I recognize how necessary this is. When I think about heirs' property, how many people have been deeply impacted by that, how many of those homes are in District One? I have a responsibility to my constituents, obviously, to look out for them, but please, I, that in, in no way means that I'm not interested in the safety. I, how, how, how do we do this? Then becomes, you know, that's, that's the elephant in the room, the major question that probably nobody has an answer to, but I, I will tell you that right now, as it stands, I'm going to lean towards those vulnerable families in the, who need our consideration the most, and, and that would mean that I wouldn't be able to support this. But this is necessary, and I just, I'm interested in conversations moving forward, you know, about how we might be able to do this. Were you, were you gonna say something, Madam Curtis?
I was trying to whisper.
You cannot whisper.
It did not work.
You're like my aunt, you cannot whisper.
I'm so sorry. I was wondering if we could set aside, Mr. Mayor, if we could set aside the first reading approval and just allow us to do some more internal discussion around it, and get back with a recommendation, maybe with some solutions or with some funding, supplemental funding options, but for now, we don't have the answers to maybe some things that could help the discussion today, and so...
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I seconded for discussion, but I don't intend to support it.
That's what motions are about.
Right. So, I, I, I think that the helpful thing here is it has brought this forward once again to us for the overall discussion, and if we could have, in not too distant future, a discussion about how this works with some resources that we can offer the community, or that we're already offering, and we can tailor to, to work with this, so that, so that dangerous homes or dangerous properties are, are made less dangerous, and so that we incentivize owners to get fixed, but we don't further penalize people who didn't do anything wrong in the first place. Mr. Person, do you have something?
I was just gonna suggest, if, if the Commission is interested in putting funding towards things, I would not recommend you put funding towards clearboarding. Like, there are a bunch of really good ways to, like, to deal with dangerous buildings that does not include putting Plexiglas up in the, in the windows, so. To the extent that, like, that factors into any decisions you make, I do wanna put that on the record, so.
Just something that popped into my head, you know, I, I was thinking really quickly, and this is just an offshoot thought, if we reached out to, I don't know who provides Plexiglas, glass, Home Depot or whoever it is, inform some sort of partnership or some sort of initiative, that perhaps they're the people that provide the Plexiglas options for those heirs' properties or whatever, I don't know, it's just, I don't get into the day-to-day. But that's one of the things that just jumped into my mind, you know, perhaps there is an external partner out there that might be willing to work with us.
And as we're deciding what the next step is, I haven't heard this as much, but one of the things, I mean, as you go to areas, and you said that every other house seems to have these, has stuff up on it, I mean, it's, boarding is a sign of blight, it lowers the property values and everything nearby of it. It lowers the property size and everything nearby of it. It is, and it's just so visible as people are going through a neighborhood or through a formerly prosperous commercial district. It's almost like a sign of this used to be prosperous and now it is less so. This either, this neighborhood and this commercial space and just doing something that helps to make those look. You need to secure those buildings, you need to make them, uh, but I, I understand the downsides of this too. But I do want, as we're talking about our next steps, to also keep in mind that part of this is also to, um, make some of those areas look nicer, even though it's not directly public property. How can we ensure that those do not have the appearance of, of blight and that they look a bit nicer? I think that's one of the, one of the main benefits of it.
Mr. Book?
Yeah, the high grass, broken windows, broken wood, ceilings that are falling through destroys a neighborhood.
Yeah.
Right? And everybody who lives on that street is saying, somebody doesn't care about a neighborhood. So I agree with that one hundred percent. Uh, it seems like that the support services that we have are in place and that they should be on the front end, is what I'm hearing some of my colleagues say. So we already have some funds that deal with heirs properties. And the object of that is to help them get to the root of who owns that property, rather than clearing up title and deed and then move forward on that property. So that's already in place, correct?
That's correct.
Right? That's that kind of community and housing resources in kind of one, under one umbrella. And I think that's, that's more important than however we board up a home. There's no doubt about that. Um, so I would agree with what I hear with that, that that's, that's absolutely essential. I think that the second piece is though, we run the risk, there's always a timeline that runs. Once you decide that something is, you use the word dangerous, hazardous life safety, now we're on the hook. So we're on the hook for fifty-plus properties if something were to happen with them. And if they're all boarded up right now by applied wood, we're, we're good. Doesn't matter what the surface is, at least they're more or less safe. I, I'd be happy to withdraw the motion, Mr. Mayor, but the timeline for this is immediate. It's not two months from now, it's the next commission meeting. Because we have fifty properties that we say we have. And again, if any of them are ours in two weeks, they should already be non-hazardous and non-dangerous. And that has to be, that has to be done from the.
Mr. Mayor, well, um, Mr. Backhouse, thankfully reminded me, the city's boarding, um, code is really only a temporary measure. Structures are only by code allowed to be boarded for a year. But because of some of the issues that we, you know, are talking about here, oftentimes, structures can be boarded for much longer. And so it does become an issue. We have a demo budget oftentimes, well, all the time, that demo budget always falls far short of the structures that we have that are dangerous, that we would, you know, move, move forward with. So it is a, it is, I think, something for the commission to consider in terms of where to put resources, where's the best place to put resources, um, with, with addressing some of these issues, so.
Mr. Sovereign.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Commissioner Book, did, did you, are you going to?
I'll hear your motion.
Well, I wanted to hear the, the conversation.
Well, it was barring, ending that, that I think the manager gave us a viable option to continue the conversation until staff can take our comments and try to figure out other options. Um, from a, I guess to the attorney, and gee, Mr. Person, Sir, Mr. Backhouse, from a drafting point, would an exception to, I guess, standard heirs properties, like, assist the situation? Um, like, or is that, I, I guess, like, too, too apparent on its face, creating a special class that is exempt from the rules? I'm just trying to figure out a way that we don't penalize those who really aren't to blame.
Mr. Ray, I don't think there'd be a problem creating a class of heirs property, properties. The problem might be actually a more practical determining what is an heirs property. You kind of know it when you see it and you know, you know the effect of it, but I don't know that we have any sort of registry of such.
Some of them are, are registered, or some of them are, are deemed heirs properties through the property appraiser information. It's probably not a complete list, but it is like the best that we have outside of, you know, somebody coming and saying that they have heirs property and.
Because something like that, I'd feel a little more comfortable where at least we can create a class that is exempt from, you know, these, the notice, magistrate, the fines accruing, and then having to go back anyway to get it removed. Um, if that seems to be like the fifty, okay, we protected the few and far between, but very vital group that would be most negatively impacted without fault, but still have the option to kind of level their target if they don't board up and create, you know, an eyesore at a, at a very important intersection in the city, which I think kind of gives us both. But that said, I'd rather offer that option for drafting and troubleshooting among staff.
As, yeah, as, as maybe a, um, if that's the interest of the commission, it might be easier rather than to carve out heirs properties, just to carve out buildings that have been declared dangerous. Because those, those are predominantly where we have heirs properties. And then that would apply to the target, but not to, you know, um, some of these residential structures that we have on our list.
That's why I want you guys to workshop it. If the motion is withdrawn, um, you guys can go back and have some time.
So, we ready? Let me just make one comment. I think what I would refer as a path forward is, you, you all as staff have heard, right, various charter officers here have heard what, what our concerns are, and if we could relatively sort of give that package of ideas to, to work with. This was a great jumping off point, but it's a piece of a larger issue of the larger conversation that we really need to have. Mr. Well.
The, the, who, who it is, who or what we are trying to accomplish, the, you know, heirs property is where we, we feel, it sounds like there's a consensus to some degree that that is not who we really are trying to rapidly encourage. Because we know that there are legal hoops for them to jump through. And so to Commissioner Sacco's point about creating a class that is somehow exempt or protected, it seems like it would be more about, less about defining who's affected, but clarifying that this is for properties where ownership is very clear and or simple in targeting it that way, um, as opposed to trying to get to the true definition of heirs property to some degree. I, I offer that. And then in general, this is probably the most nuanced thing I've seen, Commissioner, that I have experienced in any meeting I have observed, this nuance, this serious, this like level of absolute care and tenderness around it. And it makes, I mean, it makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, it's not a lot of zeros and ones, everything has.
Everything we do is nuances, you know?
Okay, uh, let's hear from, from the, the public and then we'll come back and finish this up. Anybody? Okay. All right, so.
All right, so that makes it easy. I thought we might have some citizen comment. Um, I withdraw the motion with the intent that this is on the next city commission agenda, um, in which case there'll be some type of motion there. But the data that we have to have as backup is clear. It's where are the homes, what are the homes, and what have we done to get them to a place where they're not dangerous and hazardous at this point? So it may be that, you know, X amount are heirs property, X amount have already contacted an out-of-state owner. We need some real good information. I think that's what I was hearing the Commissioner Sacco speak to also, is good information with which to make a decision. And that's always a good thing. And so it's got to be real concrete information about the nature of what those homes are. What have we done to make sure that they're not dangerous and hazardous? Because the clock's running.
Is that going to be, I mean, I heard you both want, they want concrete data, but that's also in two weeks. I don't know what it takes to get this kind of data, but is that, I mean, do you have some flexibility with the tie? Or?
No flexibility. I was actually thinking they probably have the vast majority of it, and it probably needs to be put in a spreadsheet or something. But if that's wrong, then, then we do need to do that. I think it's probably available, needs to be compiled.
Yeah, I just, yeah, I bet.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Um, I want to speak for code, but I'm pretty sure you guys board up a dangerous property if it's dangerous. You, you handle it if it is an apparent danger, correct? Any ones?
Pete Backhouse, Code Enforcement Manager. Yes, Commissioner, when we get a complaint on a dangerous property, we initiate an investigation. And our first concern is making it as not dangerous as possible. And that typically is where the board and seal comes in to limit access to it and limit access to the property. And then we follow up from there.
Thank you. So let's pretend this conversation hasn't happened at all. Everyone got food poisoning, no one showed up. We didn't have two weeks from now, and there's a dangerous structure. You still have authority and options to execute.
Which is where the thirty five.
Without this conversation.
Which is where the thirty-five hundred dollar board and seal budget comes in, where if we can't get a property owner to take responsibility for it, we step in. Now, that thirty-five hundred dollars is not enough to do a polycarbonate board and seal, but at least we have something that we can temporarily put on there.
Cool. Uh, thank you. That's leading me to a point about the timing, where the building isn't going to be open for business and dangerous activity if we don't decide this in two weeks. I want staff, because I think we've given a lot of conversation, a lot of topics for management to really go look at. I don't want to rush them towards finding the solution or the answer. I want them to actually troubleshoot and workshop potential options for us to come back. And I think that's what I heard the mayor say, well, like a list of options. Then I think on top of the other eighty hats they wear, two weeks might not be enough.
No, I would agree, speaking for staff.
Thank you.
I mean, we can come back with something in two weeks, but I can't guarantee that it will give us the time to make it a quality item for you to, you know, contemplate. So I would ask for us to be able to come back, not the next meeting, but the following meeting, we should be able to do it.
Thank you. Not much. And since there is no motion on the floor right now, I would move that we direct staff to explore some options, come back with some of that data on which properties are impacted and some alternative solutions.
Sure.
Or actions that we can explore in a month.
All right. Any, any questions about that, or we've talked this. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Just to clarify, Mr. Mayor, so that was here on first reading and advertised as such. I think we can continue it to a date certain and refine on the advertising. So have we continued it to the two sixteen meeting? Or you just want to continue it for further discussion and then advertise first reading on a later date?
Yes, yeah, we don't know what that.
So it's not going to come back on first reading? It's going to come back to figure out what the proper direction is, and then we'll have a first reading subsequent to that with new advertising and everything. Thank you.
All right, any other commission comment?
Madam Manager, would you, would you mention those two kudos ahead?
I certainly will. So, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, Santa Fe College has recognized Yvette Carter as a woman of distinction. It has been announced, she's somewhere hiding, but she did not want me to. But it is important, it's a nice accolade from her, so I wanted to make that. Uh, and there are, actually, this is GRU, it is not General Government, it has to do with storm recovery.
Oh, yeah.
So you can speak.
Yeah. And actually, I'll add to the, uh, Yvette's, so she will be recognized March first. It's a luncheon at Santa Fe College on March first, where they will recognize her as a woman of distinction for our community. And it really has to do with her time and talents that she has focused on improving our community over her, her lifetime here. Uh, her and I came to Gainesville at the same time. I like to wish that we ran into each other, but we don't remember that. We were at UF at the same time. Um, okay, so with that.
Restoring communities.
Yeah, the restoring communities. So we, FMEA is an electric organization, uh, they recognized us for an award. GRU, us for really helping through mutual aid when storms come to, come to the state of Florida. So public utilities really have this really close bond with one another. When storms come in, we all start talking to each other, uh, both electric, water, wastewater, all the utilities. We start talking to all each other, wherever this storm is going to hit, we all got each other's back. And, um, and this award really comes from FMEA recognizing that we, this year, just like probably every year for the last several years, there have been storms that have come, we have provided mutual aid to others and others have provided mutual aid to Gainesville Regional Utilities. And so it just really recognizes bonded. And I can't express enough the importance of those relationships we have with other utilities, uh, both public power, A-L-I seven water, wastewater, uh, it, it really, it's to the level that staff know each other. And there are utilities that come here and they know our system because they've been here many times. We go to other communities and we know their systems. And I think that's a, that's a really important kind of relationship. So we've been recognized with that this year for the 2020 Restoring Communities Award for many people throughout our utilities that have, have done that. So thank you for recognizing it.
Thank you. Mr. Justice.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And kudos, well, kudos, kudos to the clerk and nurse staff for an excellent, excellent retreat at the best I've attended. So very, 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 very well done. Just wanted to say that, to thank them. I'll, I'll.
And I, I, I always want to talk about that, but also, um, staff who made our meeting today possible in this location on short notice. So thank you to staff for pulling off, you know, a meeting in a place we weren't expecting to be. Hopefully, we still got it done. Yes.
Yes, sir. So, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Commission, we have a City Services Fair scheduled for Saturday, February fourth, um, from nine to noon at the Senior Rec Center. GRU and GG, we've done this, this will be our third, um, City Services Fair, where we educate our neighbors to what our services are. And we actually educate each other, uh, in terms of departments, as to what the city offers, and so we can be better ambassadors. Um, we talked about a lot of things at this one, this is in your district, Commissioner Book. We talked about lots of things. We're going to have a special subject this time around housing. Um, we're going to be, uh, providing some transportation for neighbors to be able to get to the fair this time so that we can make sure that, you know, we fully take advantage of it. Uh, we have a chat with the Commissioner timeframe built in, and I know everybody has been contacted to participate. We already have Commissioner Willetts, Mayor Ward, and Commissioner Book. And so I invite as many other commissioners as possible to schedule some time to spend with our neighbors. Thank you.
So I, I was going to touch on, on all those things. Um, I, the, uh, the City Services Fair, for those of you who haven't been able to be a part of that, it's phenomenal. It really is a great idea we did. It's great for the neighbors who show up to learn about city services. It's also great for people providing city services to get to know each other in ways that they don't otherwise. Somebody works at Public Works, their, their daily work life is about Public Works. And they run into same people over and over. They don't run into people from parks, and they don't run into folks that run into line workers from GRU. This mixes our people up. They're, it's a great opportunity for them to, to meet neighbors, but it's also a great opportunity for community builders to, to meet each other in a significant kind of conversational way. I find it really, really useful, uh, the, the couple that I've attended. And similar to that, I'm trying to, to think of a way, and I'll work with the clerk's office on this, they don't know yet, but. I, I would like us to get kind of a, a community events fiscal calendar up in, in the office space because there are, there are a lot of events where it makes a real difference for there to be a commissioner there. And we don't always know what, what's going on. Together, the seven of us probably know pretty much everything that's going on. And if we can get things up on a calendar, there may be something that, that I can put up there that I'm not able to attend. But if one of us can show up, it means the world to our neighbors for city government to be represented by the people that they went to the booth and voted for. So I, I want to try to build that out and so that we can be represented in many ways, so that also we can hear what folks are talking about. We are the best public engagement that there is. We're the people, again, that they went to the booth and voted for. So we are the people we want to engage with, for the most part. And so I'm going to try to get that built up. I'm open to ideas for, for how we do that going forward. I do want to absolutely thank clerk's office and manager's office for all their work on, on the retreat. I mentioned that it would be a good idea, next thing I did, clerk's office was all, they, they, they had it, none of you know. And, and I, I thought it was very useful personally. I appreciate everybody who's, who always had part of that. So I appreciate you all for today. I think this is an extremely productive, uh, first full meeting, and I'm glad that we're off and running. Anything else? All right, we are adjourned, go.